Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome all of you to the board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at the John. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. Para acceder traducción, por favor aprieten el botón del globo en Zoom o en John, pueden ir a la esquina de gimnasio. We are returning from closed session after our opening procedures. The public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board recently voted to change public comment format. We have opportunities on non agenda items in person through Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you're attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in to the staff, they are placed in order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and switching between public comment at the John and one at Zoom. If participating via Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting in the phone by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will have opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after staff presentation for each discussion and action items. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move on to our opening procedures. First, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please rise. For our land acknowledgement, I'll pass it to Ms. Neely Johnson.
Doctor. Yes. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Cheknyoni who Kama, Karken, Oloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you so much.
Now time for roll call.
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
President Gonzalez Hoi.
Present.
Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Reckler. Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Student trustee Baron.
Good evening, present.
Student trustee Santos. We have one trustee, two trustees absent today. Trustee Reckler and student trustee Santos.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we're going to move to ratification of closed session. We do have a report out. Regarding agenda item eight point two point three, the board voted to reject claim six two zero eight zero eight related to alleged personal injury. The members voted as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. President Gonzalez, oh, yes. Trustee Phillips absent, trustee Reckler absent, clerk Smith falls, yes. We're now going to move to public comment. Ms. Cornejo, Ms. Munoz, do we have a public comment?
Our first public comment is Whitney Gresswald.
Good evening, school board. I come here today to express disappointment in West Contra Costa Unified School District's decision to close public school campuses to the community. I'm a mother of two, a taxpayer and a Richmond district four resident. Over the past years, school grounds have been the main safe place where my kids can play. Now, when I go by the local campuses, all I see are padlocks. While I understand that there are some safety concerns, which is the reason provided when I asked for an explanation about this decision, these campuses have been open historically. The closure of the campuses is disheartening because it's an example of how our public resources are slowly declining. Our kids deserve more. And I know it's not only my kids. I used to observe all of Dianza High School's courts in use by teens and young adults after school and on the weekends. Now what are those kids doing? More screen time? I know from a personal standpoint, my own kids have more screen time because we do not have access to parks. And now we don't have access to campuses either. Further, it is my understanding that when households are assessed, they incur an MRAD fee, which stands for Maintenance and Recreation Assessment District, which requires public school campuses to be open to the public for a percentage of the time. I would like to ask the board. What is the district legally obligated obligated to provide to the public under the MRAD assessment? Please consider a reversal of this decision for the communities of West Contra Costa. We cannot let our public resources continue to be stripped away until we have nothing. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Amy Aldrich. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name is Amy Aldrich. As you already know, I work at the adult school in the older adult program. I represent our program on the board of our union. And I would like to make sure that before any more time goes by, we have a contract. There have been years of negotiating and positioning and changing of minds and so on and so forth. But I think it's very important for the adult school to have a contract. People work really hard. We're all really dedicated teachers. You get the best teachers in the adult school because these are people who are dedicated to their areas and come as a volunteer basically to give the communities information that they have. So they're giving back and they need to have safety. They need to have the same things all the other teachers in the district have. The adult school is unique and wonderful. It reaches out into our community in important ways. And understanding that these are programs for people who need to get their education after they have not succeeded and they have GED there, they have ESL there. People who come to our country and need to learn our language. And our older adult program makes a place for all the older adults in our community to come together and have at least have lunch, have some exercise, have some spirited conversation, learn a new language, play music together, et cetera, et cetera. So please make sure that there is, I know negotiating has started up again. I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for you listening to me, but we need our contract. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. This year, we've had a lot of trials and tribulations. I was hoping to end it on a very positive note with a full staff in our cabinet, a full staff in our school sites. And it doesn't seem that we're going to do that. I see on the agenda tonight that there are several interim positions that will be placed. It's interesting that once again, we will start the school year without permanent people. I feel very sorry for our students and staff who need that support and longevity. I hope that the board and the interim persons in place will look towards having permanent people for our students that have a community and staff involvement. We have had numerous outsiders, people that do not know our community, that do have not had any vested interest in our students or community come into our district in the last several years. I do understand that there are at least two people that are interming that have a vested interest in our district. I am glad to hear that portion of it. But why not make those people permanent in those positions? If they have a vested interest, they have longevity in the district. Put them in those positions so that we can have some sustainability. Please start looking towards sustainability for our staff and students and make us want to come to work and school. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Pam Tolu. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I just want to share, I am exhausted. What my kids didn't know until yesterday is that I've been feeling sick and not anywhere near 100%. Yesterday, my body just said, nope, we're not gonna make it today. Just did not have the ability to push through. And I really felt bad and sad about the for my kids because also we're in the midst of finals. And so I pull my kids out of class, I'm working with them, but I just, my body said, nope, not today. And I just had to prioritize my health, even though I felt the way that I did about not being there for my kids. So in part, this leads me to share like for any of our members or anybody who's, you know, employed with the district and you're a Kaiser member, there are some other services to utilize to help you through. So they have various gym memberships that you can get for about $30 a month or so. We can also get the premium version of the Calm app for free. And within that, there's like meditation, there's music, there's mindfulness, there's wellness tools for work, sleep stories. So I just wanted to share that because what we do is a lot and we're pushing through to the end. And so I just wanted to share that with my with my district family and the community also. So lastly, what I want to say is today I received a gift at work from a district colleague. And if she is listening, I want to say it was a pleasant surprise. It was an uplifting surprise, especially with me coming back after I haven't been feeling well for so long. And I just want to let her know that I am thankful and I'm grateful for her words that she shared with me in the car. So with all that being said, I want to say love and blessings to everybody this night. And we're just pushing through till the end. So everybody have a wonderful blessed night.
Our next public comment is George Persley.
Good evening, board. I'm George Persley, retired educator and dedicated follower of the fortunes of Astu. During the board meeting of June 15th, 2022, after hearing many complaints about the twice firing of the president and vice president of the Adult School Teachers Union, the superintendent assured everyone that this was not union busting, but a simple clerical error and that he was going to have an official inquiry about how it happened. There would then be a report about this and in very clear and forceful language. He said that the report would be sent to the board and made public. After many months, Kristen asked a board member about the report and was told that it was complete and had been sent to the board weeks ago. Chris and Ken then wrote an email asking to see the report and was told that this was not possible. It obviously was never made public. Subsequently, the administration claimed ridiculously that Chris and Ken were actually not even part of their own union, which the district and the perv had certified five years ago, along with hiring a new principal who now has an overflowing file of cease and desist letters. It seems pretty obvious that the layoffs were no clerical error. You just got caught. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Tara Fay. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Neely Johnson. My name is Tara Fay and I'm the music teacher at Penole Middle School, though I won't be for much longer. I was informed that our music program is being cut from five classes to just two beginning band classes. Our guitar program will be completely eliminated and there will be no choir or advanced band. Over the last three years, I have poured my heart and soul into this program. I've built up a successful guitar program from scratch, tripled our band enrollment and run an after school advanced band and choir in my free time. Last night, we put on an awesome concert that reminded me why I love what I do so much. My students are my life and the thought of leaving them breaks my heart. My students were really dejected when they found out I was leaving today instead of being able to celebrate their promotion to high school. There aren't enough classes for even half of my current seventh graders to stay in the music program. And those experienced musicians won't be able to take an advanced class as was discussed earlier this year. For weeks, I've been emailing my administration to find out more, but I've been unable to receive answers to any of my questions. Why is music being cut? What was the total FTE allocated to our site? Was our seven period day schedule taken into account? Why is our administration cutting music but trying to add a leadership class as a new elective? Why isn't the master schedule available to staff? How will the elimination of most of our electives affect our IB candidacy? So far, I've received no answers. My students, like all students, deserve access to a quality music education. I am asking you, members of the school board, to stand up for the arts. If not for me, then for the hundreds of students affected just this year. And please also think of our high school and elementary feeder programs that will be destroyed if if the middle of the pathways is taken out of the running. Keep the cuts away from our kids and I'll end with a quote from one of my students' parents. Guitar with Ms. Fay and choir on Thursdays is the only reason my daughter is willing to attend school. She is already saying she's not going to school next year. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Yolanda Vera Allen.
Good evening, trustees, WCC community. I am Yolanda Vera Allen and I'm a proud parent of three children in our district, one of which graduated last night at Richmond. We're so excited, so very proud of her. Big shout out to Nefetiri, who graduated from our adult school facility, which did an amazing job. I really want to thank all of educators there for supporting my daughter through through a very difficult time. Big shout out to Ms. Sonia Neely Johnson, who really listened to us and provided the support that we needed to get our daughter through. So tonight, when I got here and saw these educators out here walking, I was really dismayed. We have another group of educators who are feeling disenfranchised and not heard and not paid what they deserve. And it's a difficult place for us because already we have taken money from 11% of our budget to pay for 50% of our teachers educator teachers raises and taking from our LCAP and our concentrated funds. And I don't know if everybody in our community understands that, that we're taking from the least to pay for educators who we all want to get paid and supported. Clearly, there's more work to do to figure out how to get everybody paid right. But I don't want it to be at the expense of those who need our support the most and are getting the least from the little bit of money that we do have. So I think it's time to go back and take another look because this didn't work for everybody. It's not working for our most disenfranchised student. It's not working for all of our educators. It's not the way through this. And I know you can figure it out, but I don't think we've gotten there yet. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Andrew Wilkie. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Richmond High School, your band teacher out here. The main reason I'm here tonight is to advocate for marching band to be considered for PE credit. Many programs in the state of California recognize marching band and the marching arts as physical education because it is. Our students who do marching band put in a very large amount of hours doing all sorts of representation for our schools that involves physical activities. For instance, when our kids did Chinese New Year parade in the city, they're marching for three miles this year in the rain. And it's not marching, isn't just walking. It's a different thing and they're also playing, which playing instruments is a very physical activity, especially when you're carrying a 20, 25 pound drum or whatever. It would make life a lot easier for our students, many of which are our kids who take all the AP classes and have to balance a complex schedule and then are fitting in PE, which no offense to PE, but PE, you could come watch a PE class, come to any of our schools and watch PE class and then come watch a marching band rehearsal and you be the judge. So I really hope you guys consider this. It used to be a thing. When I was at Penole, it used to be that you would get a semester's credit of PE for every year you did marching band. This seems like a pretty easy win for you guys tonight. I know there's a lot of complex issues. So please, please consider that. I mean, your two student trustees, Kaylee and Danielle, are both students in the marching band here at Richmond High School. They can attest to these things. Next thing, talking about Tara Fay. You, when I started at Richmond High, Richmond had nothing. Kennedy still is struggling to get anything going. I'm talking about music wise. But now these traditional schools like Penole, Dianza, you're, they're getting slashed, the music departments. You should, we should really think about what's important and what benefits students and the community. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Our next public comment is Kristen Persley.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristen Persley. I'm the Vice President of Adult School Teachers United. We're a small union, but we love our work and we know it is important. That gives us strength. We were recognized in 2017 and have been bargaining our first contract since 2018. Five years is too long to wait. We are glad that we will be sitting down at the negotiating table with WCCUSD again. If the district deals with us fairly, it should not take long to reach an agreement on the five articles that remain. We ask that the district respect the teachers who work so hard every day to improve the lives of their students and negotiate a good contract for them as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maris Arnold. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
All right, I'm unmuted. Good evening, board. I'm Maris Arnold and I'm one of your ESL teachers and have the honor of teaching citizenship. The board should be very proud it has this program. You wouldn't believe what students overcome to obtain citizenship. Yet, adult ed teachers and by proxy, their students are not respected. Adult ed teachers have been working without a contract for five years. The school board isn't the problem. It's the adult ed negotiating team. Our adult ed union, ASTU, Adult School Teachers United, certified by the Public Employment Relations Board five years ago, has already filed an unfair labor practices suit against them. And it was accepted for hearing coming up soon. The adult ed negotiating team has not shown good faith. And among other things, changes supposedly binding agreements without any explanation. I am asking that this school board issue an order that the adult ed negotiating team immediately begin bargaining with ASTU in good faith, which it hasn't demonstrated to date. Your board has that power. I also ask that your order include an accountability clause requesting that ASTU report back to you whether your order is being followed. Thanks for listening and considering my concern.
Our next public comment is Jose De Leon.
Good evening, school board. First of all, I'd like to highlight all the hard work that's been happening throughout the school year. We're still not back to normal. Pandemic still affecting us. But I'd like to congratulate all the staff at the sites for battling through this year as we work back towards normalcy. It's really hard for the administrators to work with their teachers and the rest of the staff to create the best learning environment for teachers. But every day, the whole team fights through it. So I'd like to thank everyone at every school, the support from the district office for doing this hard work. Additionally, we're looking forward to start planning towards next year. Planning is the most important part in preparation to support our students. So once again, thank you for all the support from all the different staffs. Thank you for support from the district office. And we look forward to planning to prepare for our students next year. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you so much to all the speakers. Sorry, is that better? A little better. Perfect. Yeah, thank you. I did, I was asked to clarify one thing. Oh, a little bit better. There you go. To Mr. Wiki and Mr. De Leon, we are bringing a policy change for the marching band to count as P for the next board meeting. So I was asked to 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 clarify that. Thank you. We also have four requests to address the board next. The first one is from our district local control accountability plan committee, our DL cap parent group. Then after that, we have the multilingual district advisory committee, MDOC. After that, the African American student advisory team ASAP. And then lastly, our, thank you, special education community advisor committee, CAC. They each will get 10 minutes. So if we could put up 10 minutes on the screen. And then if we could have our first speakers, sorry. They have a presentation. Great. So if we could have our first speakers, our DL cap committee come up. So if we could have our first speakers, our DL cap committee, come up. And we're pulling up the first presentation.
Thank you.
So we won't be able to put up your timer, so I'll be taking the time. Would you like me to let you know when you're a certain point? Like two minutes, four minutes, five minutes? Okay, five minutes and then two minutes? Perfect. I'll let you know. Thank you so much.
Good evening, board trustees. Really appreciate the time to come talk to you today. My name is Lucas Manix. I am the Rising DL Caps Committee Chair. I'm also the proud parent of a rising kindergartner and a rising second grader. And Yolanda, introduce yourself.
And I'm Yolanda Villar Allen, the Rising Parliamentarian for the DL caps. And really happy to be here tonight to present these recommendations to you.
So last night, we had our DL caps committee meeting where the district had spent time looking at our recommendations and coming back with some replies to those. So we'd like to spend our time today going through the recommendations and talking a little bit about where the discrepancies are between our recommendations and, and what the district has accepted so far and what we would like to continue to push for. So if we can go to the first page there. So our, our recommendations for this year's, or for next year's 2023, 2024 LCAP really can fall under three categories. First one is communication, second is accountability, and the last one is data. And these can really be summarized by our first recommendation, which is to create a task force of the parent advisory committees and with district leaders to craft and then implement a parents' bill of rights that we can all be excited about and get behind. We're really excited that the district has decided to accept our recommendation to create this task force and we really look forward to, to working in partnership with them on this. So I'll, I'll go through our draft outline of the, of the bill of rights. So in, in order to enable a true partnership between parents, community sites, and the district, parents must have the rights to, one, consistent and clear communication with the district sites and teachers. Two, access to data to monitor student achievement, district and site performance, and district program efficacy. Three, hold the district and site leaders accountable to improve academic outcomes and make decisions based on performance metrics. And four, a current directory of district offices with descriptions of its functions, availability, and contact information of the current staff. So we'd like to go now double click into the first category of recommendations, which is communication. So would you mind going to the next slide? So we've outlined here with the color coding, which of the recommendations the district has decided to accept fully, which ones they've modified, they're in the light green, and in the red, which ones have been denied. So we'll spend most of our time looking at the modified and denied ones. Just to quickly recap the two that have been accepted here under the category of communication. One is improving the accessibility of site level websites to publish curriculum, SPSAs, and including data like sites budgets, programs, and services outlined for high need students. Number two is aligning communications such as Parents Square for parents, teachers, sites, and districts. And, and most importantly here is really providing the develop, professional development support for teachers and for our scows so that they can learn how to use these platforms and effectively communicate with their students and, and us as parents on a very regular basis. If we go to the next slide, thank you. On the, on the accountability side, we have a few recommendations. So number one, increasing the LCAP support for establishment of site level P, of parent action advisory committees and school site councils. Number two is finalizing the parent rubric and implementing it at all sites. Very thankful that the, the district has accepted these and we look forward to working on these together. On the next two, those have been modified a bit by the district, so like to talk about those in detail. So number three, there is improving and investing in targeted outreach to high need students. Our understanding from the discussion last night is the district plans to use the community school budget in order to improve some of this outreach. But what we would like to continue to push for is making sure this is a requirement across all sites, not just community schools. Number four is creating implementation plan to partner with students and families across secondary and elementary levels to identify individual learning needs. This one's particularly important to us because as we all know, students have all kinds of different learning styles, different needs. And we would like to see an actual plan for how we would get here. The current district response is that they will create strategies to get here, but we really want to see a plan and we want to see action on this in the next year. Next page, page please. So number five here is in partnership with the program directors, provide a clear system to determine program effectiveness that is shared with families quarterly to determine success. This has been kind of one of our biggest frustrations here. Throughout the DL cap monitoring process is not a clear way to actually monitor programs and their effectiveness, and we really want to see that be improved throughout the next year. And then I'm going to jump to number seven because I think we're running a little bit short on time here. Number seven is improving engagement and attendance of PD to support teachers to increase academic outcomes of targeted students. From the monitoring process, we saw that some of the professional development is offered at a central level, does not have great attendance and does not cover the majority of our, of our teachers that need this professional development. So we want to see some strategies and some plans around how to actually improve that. This was denied based on current site budgets and being able to implement a professional development at the site level. So we would like to see some ideas like the district being able to offer during school professional development and coordinating substitutes for teachers so they can actually attend these professional developments. I'd like to turn it over to Yolanda for the rest.
Thank you. Thank you, Lucas. First of all, I just want to say thank you guys so much. Many of you know, we have been asking for a district-wide data dashboard for at least the last five to 10 years. And finally, you said yes. And so we're very excited about that and want to commend you on that. However, the parents have been asking for it so that we will have access to our students' data and you can't, and that piece you still have denied. You're gonna do it for yourselves, but not for us. And that's obviously a problem because you need us in this with you. We need this information to be able to support our children, to have the data to know the things that they're expressing in school is working. Without that data, we can't support them, to help them rise. And that's what this is all about, supporting our students. This needs to be student-facing. It needs to be family-accessible. It's not just for you, but we want you to have it because you need to know what you're doing is working as well. But so do we, because we are your partners. You're the best partners that you have in this struggle and you're not utilizing us. And we need our parents to come out and to rise up and to lift your voices in this and get involved on your school sites with the parent groups so that we can hear and know what you want for your children as well. We've been saying this for a long time now. We're taking that first step. Don't get scared. You can do it. We know that this is, this is possible. Because those of us who have IEPs know that we can access through password protected protection, we can access our students' information, their data, their assessments, all their records. We can access that. So the information, the technology is available. What you're telling us is that you don't have the capacity. If ever there was a reason to create a contract or agreement, let's do it for this. If you don't have the capacity in-house, then let's contract for it so that we are able to create the systems that we need to be able to move this forward. And then as a board, create the policies that are necessary to maintain these systems. We need a system change district-wide and we need it accessible at every site level. Thank you for taking the first step. Let's not back down from it. Let's keep it moving forward. Thank you so much. That's my time.
Thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate the time to listen to our recommendations and we look forward to partnering with the district and board trustees on this next year. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much to you both for coming and your presentation. Now we're gonna move to our MDOC committee. I have a button with a face. Oh, there it is. It's there. It's there. No, press it again. Perfect.
Okay. We're talking about it. Good evening. My name is Erica Cruz. I'm a mother of two children who belong to the district school. Together with my colleague Stephanie Sequeira, we are co-presidents of the MDOC. And according to law, we have to advise, obviously, the district to the director about the issues related to our English students. Who belong, obviously, to our district. The communication that should be given to all our parents.
Erica, excuse me for interrupting.
Thank you.
Do we have translation at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, board, if you could put on your.
So please, everybody have the helps, the audio for them to be translated and that all the people who are here can use the translation. And as I said, it's something that all the families in this district always, always, always have this problem. Unfortunately, there is no translation, this information, this transparency, where we can help all our parents, where we can help all our students, especially those who are new.
Okay, we're waiting for one more. Thank you, Rosa. Could we start their time again, please? Erica, we're starting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erica Cruz de Sabala. I'm a mother. I'm a mother of two children who belong to this district school. Very proud because one of them is already classified and one is in the process. We are together with my colleague Stephanie Sequeira, we are co-presidents of the MDOC. Which is the multilingual council. And we came here to give them some recommendations. But before we give them these recommendations, we are going to send them by written. Because we have already seen a lot of information that we are seeing. This information is given by the state. And we are a little afflicted by the data that is being sent and that we are giving to our students, our English students. The communication that should be given to all our parents, to all our students, to all the schools, to the professors within this district, should be given with success to all our ILLACs. Because those programs of ILLAC are the ones that are reinforced by our parents to support all our English students. Which, we have seen all the schools, this reinforcement. We need a monitoring system at school to ensure the information that the ILLAC team delivers with success. To all the delegates of ILLAC, to have those instruments so that we can monitor our children's progress. But how can we monitor our children's progress if we don't give them these recommendations, this information? It's so simple. We are seeing this information that is being delivered by the state. Where, unfortunately, we are seeing, for example, Panol, 231 students who are English students, 122 didn't pass the LCAP. We are seeing 109 students who stayed in the ILLAC. Richmond, 652, 168 students, 84 students didn't pass that exam. So what is being sent? Regardless of having very few students who are being classified. There is a considerable number of our English students who don't have the opportunity to take the LCAP. It's difficult to see that the lack of support, the lack of communication is being taken. We want all of our students in the district of West Coast to be given. We can't see the intention of asking how our child got out of the LCAP. Why? We don't know. How did they get out of these exams? What kind of education does my child have? As a matter of fact, I'm going to give my colleague Stephanie a word to make sure that all this information that we are trying to give to all our English students in this district who have the right to give this support to them.
My name is Stephanie Sequeira and I'm also the MDOC chair for our district. And this might be our last, or maybe one more year for both of our youngest, we might be reclassifying next year. So we'll be saying our futures goodbye before. We wanted to bring back to you today the highlights of what went down this year, plus what we would want, what we would have wished for that would have happened. We're thankful, right, that the doors opened back up again because in reality during the, during that pandemic, we weren't, we weren't, we were unable to have MDOC meetings, right? Parents weren't present via that pandemic just because of digital, the fact of the digital world, people weren't really adjusting that too well. We tried opening our doors this time and tried having MDOC meetings in person. And unfortunately, again, we did have scows present at these meetings, but the lack of parent involvement is speaking loud and very clearly for us in regards to our MDOC community, right? And we specifically highlight that, that this isn't the Latino population, but that this is our parents, our English learners. So that means what communication is going down in the schools aside from English? How do our parents feel welcome? And even though we want to highlight millions or thousands of recommendations, we realize that the one that's bringing a huge concern to us right now is the lack of parent involvement. If we ask and request data from school sites, our ELACs aren't up to date. We can give you that data as soon as we get back to home and figure that out with the data that we gathered. Most of our ELACs aren't happening. So legally, how are our SECs even allowed to be adopting the budget if ELACs have not presented to them? If we can't have ELAC present at the school's lights, we cannot have MDOC. And legally, we cannot be running or presenting recommendations to the DL caps and for you to adopt that in order to move back to the county, to the state, or whatever they may be. Our schools are not in compliance. We continually see this year after year and nothing has changed. Not the board, not the suit, not the, whatever it is, maybe holding accountable, right? We recently hired barely this year our new EL director. I think in the course of my 14 years, I've already gone through a handful of them, handful of CAOs, handful of EL coordinators versus director. We've seen board members come and go, but unfortunately, no one is doing anything. Our ELs are consistently staying. We're looking at our high school dropout rate. Our ELs are at 30, 33%, right? Or about, it hasn't really changed. 33% of our ELs are high school dropouts. What's going on? What support are they receiving at our high school level? Majority of our EL students are not receiving A through G courses. There's not, there's a lack of communication either for our newcomers or either for our students transitioning to middle school and entering high school. We need to figure out what's going on. We're funding PD, right? We have scows and I will honestly say this, some of our scows are great. Some of our scows are great at people person, but we need them to really have the tools to really, in order to, to make sure that there's a parent-teacher-student relationship. It's not about how welcoming I feel in regards to, is there a cafecito? Is there pancito? It's, I don't want a parent coming to parent-teacher conference and telling me, hey, teacher, how's my student doing? And for the teacher to say, your students está comportando bien. And that to be it, right? For a Latino community, unfortunately, if a teacher tells the mom, tu hijo se porta bien, that mom goes back excited. But what about that reading level? What level is my child at, right? Our EL, our EL, our ALPAC, you know, did my child improve a level or not? When we are looking at the state data right now for last year, what does the district has said? Um, the state, it was unfortunate to see that seventeen point five percent of our ELs decreased one level of ELPI. Thirty-five point five percent maintained their ELPI levels. That's a total of fifty-three percent. And only forty-four point eight percent progressed one level of ELP. Our, our children are still trying to come back from the pandemic. When I looked at the math data, our current English learners are down one hundred forty-six point three percent, which meant that's a total of three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five students that are below grade level. When I look at the ELD standard, the EL, right, the ELA, our language archifrost students, they're down one hundred and twenty-five point two points. That's three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six students that are below standard. One thousand two hundred forty-nine that are are FAP, right? They were already reclassified. We assume they should be grasping English correctly, but yet we got to monitor them for years and they're still not excelling. So that tells us that that's a high number. Majority of our English learners are lacking in ELA and math and nothing's being done about it. We don't have the scouts that have been trained capable enough for our parents to really understand data. We need to build a better communication. If we're a community school now, are we hiring community schools director that can build that relationship with the school community, with the principal, with the parents, with the teachers? We need to really start looking at what that looks like, because as a mom, I want to see data. I know there's plenty of parents there that want to see data and understand data. We want to build the walls with you. We don't want to break them down for you. We are here to make sure that we building the schools that all Richmond High needs to be rebuilt, Kennedy needs to be rebuilt, right? We're looking at all these schools that nothing's going on and our kids are feeling discouraged to continue to go into schools. I know that we need to hire teachers. I know that they need a raise. But we also need to look at what the basic needs that our students are needing and unfortunately, it's not being going on in our schools. So when you're looking at budget, when you're going to adopt the budget tonight, really reflect on what's really needed or what's lacking of in our school systems in order for us to be present. We're here to support. I saw an interesting fact that her PTA ceremony that they held, they calculate their volunteer hours to money, right? Our flatland schools can't even monitor how many hours parents have volunteered. And yet we're trying to hear to say, hey, teachers, continue to raise. What about those parents that lack eating breakfast or eating lunch to support the schools to try to be present and to be helping out in the school system? Try monitoring those free hours or that free money that the parents are giving of our EL students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Muchas gracias. Our next speakers are African American Student Advisory Team ASAP Committee.
Good evening, board. My name is Alon Harrison. Um, thank you guys for hearing us this evening. It was a difficult, challenging task to get here, but thank you for hearing us. Um, we're gonna skip around this evening. The first thing I would like to talk about was thank you for supporting us with the BSU's. We did get some headway. However, we wanted to make it intentional this coming school year that we had an advisor that was gonna be intentional to help our students with leadership, with how to organize on campus. Our students are a lot of the time identified as being violent or over identification, suspension, or being bullied. Um, or having issues with their peers around being bullied. So you having a BSU advisor is another way, I think, of a prevention. So we can support our kids with learning social skills, which has been lost a lot during the pandemic. And having a BSU advisor will also support them with learning how to work together and get along with each other, boys and girls, males and females, however they identify, giving our children resources that will be consistent. And they can learn if this is their ninth grader, first year at high school, they have someone, a group that they can identify with. And it shows better if our children feel connected to the edu, it shows in data and research that if our children feel connected to where they're getting their education, they'll learn better. So please consider how that looks when you guys say that you're gonna do it through the office to not hire someone else. We as parents need to see a clear plan so we can support our children with being a part of our district's BSU's. So that's number one. The next thing I had was um our Afrocentric School. So the reason why we feel that is so important and thank you guys for, you know, saying that you'll be a part of our task force, right? Task force, yeah, okay, task force. Um, is because children, our children and our culture and what we brought to this country is not recognized enough in our educational institutions. I have talked to several, several district staff and several parents in our district and they all feel that this is something that our district could add to other schools like we have the Mandarin School, the Culture Academies, and having a school that focuses on our people would be a bonus to our district and it also would give our children a sense of belonging in our district's fabric. Having um a school that belongs to our children as a parent would make me feel proud to be a part of this. It would make me feel encouraged to be involved in the outcomes. It would make me feel supported to um do more where where we don't feel supported in our district now and our children don't feel included. Our children don't have a lot of cultural relevant things that they're learning from or learning around our environment. So having this um task force is definitely something that's really important to us and definitely something that's really valuable for our children's future. And this district superintendent stated that he would like to take our children to global learning. Having this school can give our children an opportunity to be exposed to more global learning, which Black students or students that identify as Black or African American do not get a, uh, I should say, a big opportunity to do so in our district. So those are, um, that was item two and six I just spoke on. And then Yolanda's gonna be doing the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Zalad. I'm Yolanda. And a couple of things. First, this is again, one of the first years we've seen so many of our recommendations being accepted. And I so appreciate that. And at the same time, we just have to keep in mind that so many of our children are out here really struggling and are not getting the things that they need to be able to be successful in school. The minimal advances that we are seeing are with the students who are already doing well. And even when we look at our AP classes, the students taking AP courses, that went down. And that's alarming for me, because if our students who, who have a way through are decreasing in their success rate, then imagine what's happening with those who are still really struggling and can't find their way through. So we still have a whole lot to do to make education accessible for Black students. Um, I want to draw a particular, um, your attention to a couple of things. Um, first of all, the idea of the recruiting African and African American educators. I had the opportunity to sit with the HR team and talk about recruiting. And I saw that they were reaching out all around the world for educators everywhere but Africa. Everywhere but those countries that are predominantly black skinned folks. People of the diaspora are not being reached out to outside of the HBCUs here in our country. This is a goldmine that we're missing, particularly as we look to create an Afrocentric learning community. We encourage them and they seemed open to that idea of reaching out to those countries. Please, uh, trustees, follow up with that. It's important. Every time we see school systems that are predominantly Black children, they are in Afrocentric schools. Nowhere else where there's predominant large numbers of Black children succeeding in a specific school site are the outside of an Afrocentric school and community. It makes a difference. Having Black educators makes a difference. Especially, we want Black mentors and therapists. When you're dealing with cultural issues, and yes, I believe and know that cultural competency is real and you can learn about others' cultures and rise to that. However, it makes a difference for students to see themselves represented in their educators. And so your resistance to us has been, we'll do this, but we can't promise you that they'll be Black. Well, I understand the difficulty that you're having in trying to get teachers generally. And certainly, if we look to those places where there is a predominance of Africans in diaspora, you will be able to have more people to choose from. So I think we've broadened our scope here and do some outreach beyond just the minimal means that we've been looking most recently. I think we'll have, we'll find that we have more success. Um, and then lastly, we need your support in really spreading the urgency of parent engagement. Of really pushing our administrators to start those Apex. Of reaching out to our communities so that our parents know that this is a safe and welcoming place for them. Black families are leaving this district for a reason. We are not meeting those needs. And it's not rocket science. It's really learnable and it's doable, but we have to create the climate to make it feel, for folks to feel safe and feel like they can be here and that they want to stay. So please support those efforts in strengthening all of our parent groups so that we, and we all spoke to that. We need that, those systems in place to do, to reach, to, to outreach, updating the website. Give us real materials that we can pass out, be present at events that are specific to our communities. Like have a table at Juneteenth. That's coming up in just a little bit. There are some real things that we can do that will help let folks know that we really are here, we care, and we want them to be involved in our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much to the both of you. Our next speakers. Our next speakers are Special Education Community Advisor Committee, our CAC.
Hello, back again. Solon Harrison. I'm CAC, um, co-chair, but acting chair. So um, tonight I'll just be giving you guys a brief update, um, what's been going on with CAC. Um, and for those of you that are interested, we will be posting our new members for 2025 on the website for CAC. So please look forward to that. Um, I'll share with you guys about, I was a resource parent for CAC this year. And it was very interesting to see how powerful resource parents can be. I was trained to support parents that have students with IEPs. And it was really an eye-opening experience to see what goes on in our district and how things work. And it was very rewarding to be there and supporting parents when they were dealing with a difficult time, like um reviewing their child's IEP. So that was, um, you know, a good experience. And thank you, um, Sonya, I guess, for, because you were in that position, for having resource parents, because they were very helpful for the community. And also, I would like to share um some highlights of the RDA conference that I attended this spring, I think it was this spring, yes. It was very insightful and very informative about how the district can use a lot of ways to communicate with parents around just parents getting their children ready or getting themselves ready, I want to say, to have their child assess for an IEP. Have, um, you know, talk about the IEP, how the school district can engage parents with the IEP. It was a lot of good information around communication and I learned some ways myself because I have a daughter that receives special education services from the district. But I learned some ways to communicate at this conference. And I would recommend that, um, all your educators who serve service, um, children in our district with IEP should attend some form of this training or it should be brought back for them to receive a lot of that good information. Because it was a, a wealth of knowledge and information around communication so that, and I think that's, um, a lot of barriers sometimes when parents are entering the IEP world and things, the special education world. I think that support would help. And then I would also like to share a little highlights about Make, um, hosting the annual Make a Difference Award. It was really good. It was really nice to see all the people who really support our children, the educators who support our children in the district and make things happen for them and to see our children be honored that, um, sometimes we overlook. So thank you for, um, supporting our children with, and, and our educators that make a difference. And I also would like to share about the legislative, legislative day that I attended in Sacramento. That was really good. I got to meet our districts, um, our district lobby person. And it was really nice and I got to share with him some things that I thought was important. And I always wanted to see him because I knew we were paying for him. So that was really good. And I got to speak about, um, really getting an equity lens in, um, special education and how important that is, especially for children that are over identified as special education. So that was really good to talk to him and see how we can make a difference on a lot of different levels when we advocate as special education parents. So that's all I have for this evening and thank you again. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, board, we're now going to move to agenda review and adoption. Uh, we are pulling item. Excuse me. Uh, B fourteen to a later meeting. Yes. Are there any issues with the agenda? Okay, without objections, we'll move to adopt. Adopted, wonderful. Um, okay, now we're gonna move to approval of the minutes from May third, twenty twenty-three. Or did anyone see any issues with the minutes? Okay, without any objection, it'll be adopted. I don't see an objection. So adopted. Thank you. Um, okay, we are doing something great. Next, we are recognizing our going wonderful student trustees. Uh, time went so quickly. Um, trustee Santos and trustee Barron, we do have uh, two plaques for you in recognition of your work. And I'm reading this on behalf of obviously Dr. Hurst as well, who's not here. Uh, but we also have, uh, Sonya Neely Johnson, who's acting as, as in his position for, for tonight, since he's at the, uh, El Cerrito, uh, graduation. Anyways, I'm gonna read the plaques. They both have the same. Uh, presented to trustee Barron and trustee Santos, Student Board Trustee, Spring Semester twenty twenty-three in recognition of your leadership and service to the students of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Um, and on behalf of the board and, and the board will be able to also make comments if they like. I just want to thank you because you both were incredibly prepared. Uh, you were incredible advocates for your fellow students. I know that you both were also very busy with school as it was. Um, and on top of that, you were with us and you really did make a difference for student congress. Um, and as an example to the few, the students who follow after you. So I really hope that we see you back here, uh, after your next journey, which we're really excited about. Um, and one day that you'll be in one of our seats again. Um, so I'll open it up to the other trustees before we take a quick picture. Uh, and we give you your plaques. Uh, board, anyone would like to say a few words before we, uh, clerk some faults?
I just want to, uh, take a minute and thank both of you for your hard work. It's not easy doing this as seniors. So you had to balance everything in your life and still show up. So you had to balance everything in your life and still show up prepared, uh, as President Gonzalez said. Um, Gonzalez Hoy said, you ask dynamite questions, you used your voice, you made excellent comments and you made a difference. So I just want to let you know that you really held us to a level of accountability and you made a real change. So thank you both for everything you did and good luck in your next phase. I'm complete.
Trustee Phillips?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say hello and hopefully not goodbye. Um, you have voice, um, you have agency. And it's very important that you take those skills and continue to grow on them. And as you go forward, uh, with your educational careers and your civic uh, life. Uh, that you know that you have a place, um, which you can advocate for people and for the things that you believe in. So I wish both of you, uh, the very best. Um, and I know that you are going to do very well.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yeah, I just wanna echo the same words, um, and thank, thank you too for uh, serving. And uh, and bringing life to the board. And uh, appreciate all that you guys have done and you have a journey. You just keep on moving. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Neely Johnson, would you like to say a few words?
Um, I just want to um, do the sentiments that you've already heard. But thank you for um, bringing those wonderful presentations so that we really do get to hear student voice. And so thank you for representing um, each meeting and giving us really good information to better inform our decisions.
Thank you. And would either of you would like to say a few words before we go take a picture and recognize you? Yeah, trustee Barron, go ahead.
Um, thank you all for your lovely comments. They really do mean a lot. When I first took upon this role, I did it with the mentality that I really wanted to represent students. Um, students, especially from like Richmond High, a lot of them don't really feel seen at times. And they want to know what they can do to make their community better, to make their um, their peers better. To keep going on with that success at everyone's schools. And um, having this position was something that helped me do that for others, not just myself, but for others as well. Um, and I hope whatever happens in the future, we can continue helping other students do that. Um, and helping further aid students in becoming really successful. And so yeah, this position has meant a lot to me and I'm really glad I had the opportunity to be able to do this uh, with everybody, with Daniela. Um, so I'll miss my time here and thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to be able to represent my peers. And all the students in the district. So thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Barron. Trustee Santos?
Yeah, I'm just wanted to echo the thank you for like what everybody said. Um, for me, this role is something that was not something that like I would have ever thought I'd end up doing. Um, I know coming into the country and into the district, not knowing a lick of English and not knowing how to really speak up for myself. Let alone other people. This is something that has really come like full circle for me, especially being able to. Listen to the conversations about the ally and being able to hear conversations that really heavily revolved around things. That would have impacted me and things that I never got to have a voice on when I was younger. Having to actually have the, I'll get the opportunity to voice how I felt about them now. And being able to vocalize that and get that across was something that meant a lot to me. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the both of you. So we're gonna head down um, below the stage and we're gonna take a quick picture uh, with the both of you. Okay, thank you so much and congratulations, student trustees again. Now we're gonna move forward to our consent items. Board, are there any items that anyone like to pull? Trustee Phillips?
I would like to pull five, C five.
Okay, thank you. The whole thing?
Y- yes, and can I just clarify what the point is? So it's not that I have a specific issue with any, it's the amount and because everything that's going on, I would just like there to be some kind of presentation.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, without objection, we'll approve the consent calendar without C five. Okay, so adopted, thank you. All right, so we're now we're moving to superintendent communication. We don't have a superintendent communication tonight. Um, so we, we're gonna move straight into our action items. Board, we have a lot of action items. And then we have two major discussion items. So I just want us to be thoughtful about today. We're gonna do three questions and two-minute comments per item. Um, and if possible, we won't do more than one round except for the budget, right, which will take a little bit more. Uh, we'll do two rounds there and then we'll do three-minute uh, comments for, for just F two. Um, for anyone else, we'll do the three and two. Um, okay, we're gonna move to E one, which is the Public Hearing for Special Education Local Plan, Section B. Uh, and so annual service plan, and I'll pass it over to Ms. Neely Johnson.
Thank you. Could you pull up the presentation? Okay, good evening, um. As they're pulling it up, good evening, um, board president, um, because I was hoy. Other trustees, cabinet and community. Um, I'm gonna be presenting tonight on our local plan. A local plan is something for special education that we do every three years. Um, it's a process where um, we really look at our budgets and. I think we're still waiting. We look at our budgets, um, we look at the programs that we offer. And we also look at our board policies and we make sure that everything is aligned. Um, and we have to have this public hearing so that the public can see it. Tonight is really just um, an overview and then at our next meeting, we will need to then vote for approval. Um, so far, we have had approval from our county office and our CAC. Um, we presented the plan to our CAC, we received approval there. And so now we're coming to the board to do the overview. And then again, at the next board meeting, we will ask for approval by a vote. Okay, um, just go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay, um, so I just kind of explained, um, this is something that all school districts do. There is a date that um, districts have to do this every three years and so this is our time. Next slide. So there's a process that we do. We actually um, have a committee. Um, we have our CAC representative, we have um, a general ed teacher. We have an administrator and we have special ed staff that help us go through this process. And we also have a community member. Next slide. Continue, next slide. So um, this is through AP one eight oh eight is the trailer bill language. And we, the superintendent has to consult with the Sopa administrator to conform, come, um, confirm. The local plan and local control accountability plan. So that we make sure that what is happening in special ed in terms of resources are aligned with our LCAP. And we have been a part of the LCAP for the last two years. Um, there is a template that is developed by the state for the local plan that we were working from. And once again, like I said, our county superintendent has already approved our current local plan that was presented. And it has to be reviewed every three years. And posted on our district website and our county website. Next slide. So the approval process, um, once it's developed, we seek approval from our Sopa governing board. We are a single district Sopa and so um, we go to, we come to the Board of Education for that approval. And once again, we obtain signatures from our county office superintendent, our CAC chair. And then we submit the final plan to CDE for approval. Next slide. This was our um, projected timeline. We actually started work on the plan um, this fall. And we reviewed the template. We just actually heard that the template is going to change. But we'll have time to update that before the next um, meeting. Um, we um, look at all revisions if needed. And once again, I shared the time that we met with our local plan group, with that working group. Which comprised of a variety of stakeholders and staff from our district. Next slide. Next, I'll keep going. Okay. And so um, basically, the local plan consists of contracts and certifications. Governance and administration, annual assurances to support the plan. An annual budget plan and an annual services plan. Next slide. And so um, section A, this is con- contracts and certific- certifications. And basically, this has something that we have reviewed in terms of how we're doing our governance, what our budget plan is. And different certifications by our Sopa administrators, specifically the budget plan and the services plan. Next slide. This just continues to talk about governance and administration. Next slide. This talks about the role of the Sopa administrator. Um, related to hiring supervi- supervision evaluation and just one of the Sopa administrator and staff. Um, the methods that we use to distribute federal and state funds, as you know, um. Special ed is a state and federal mandate. Um, the operation of our pro- current programs and we serve TK through transition. Excuse me, infant through transition, um, and then monitoring of the appropriate use of our federal, state and local. Um, funds that are allocated to our programs. And then how our specialized equipment and services will be distributed within our Sopa. And some of the information I'm giving you um, really relates to a multi-district Sopa. Everything we do is in-house. We serve all of the um, cities within our jurisdiction. Next slide. Um, and continuing to just look at policy, um, we brought those um, before at a previous board meeting. And then looking at our assurances and what is required for receiving funds for these services. And then of course, our Sopa services. Next slide. We have a review of our annual budget in this plan. So the actual annual service and budget plans are submitted separate. And we have to do that on an annual basis um, every year by June thirtieth. And prior to submission of those plans, they have to be adopted at a public hearing like we're having now. Um, and at least the, the service plans have to be um, posted at least fifteen days prior to the hearing. And the budget and service plans may be revised during the fiscal year. Next slide. Uh, this just reviews the annual budget plan requirements. Um, our budget codes, the special education revenue by service. Um, basic premise of our supple- Sopa allocation plan and our operating expenditures. And our projected expenditures for our supplemental aids and services. That support students in the regular classroom and also for students that are low incidence. Low incidence typically are our students that are deaf, hard of hearing or visually impaired. Next slide. Um, annual service um, plan requirements. It includes a description of our services that we provide. And like I said, we serve infant to transition age, uh, which is twenty-two. Um, it talks about the nature of those services in the plan and then where those services are delivered. And we also must demonstrate that all eligible students shall have access to the appropriate services. As specified in their IEP, which is their individual education plan. Next slide. Okay, requirements of the plan, we keep it locally. Keep going. Next slide. If we have, uh, many times in a multi-district Sopa, they contract out a lot of their services. We do a lot of our services in-house. Um, so um, these are just examples of where, where some of those inter-agencies may contract with um, districts. That may not have the capacity to provide the services. But like I said, in our district, we support a wide range of services, infant to twenty-two. Next slide. Um, regional center is mentioned there. Um, many of our students are still served in the district. But we do have a partnership with regional center where they attend IEPs and provide um, transition. From regional center to our district in some cases. Policies and prote- procedures, those are policies and procedures to support um, the federal assurances for special education. Next slide. Okay, and we just sort of talked about all of this, so keep going, the next slide. Um, one of the things to note is that the state decides the template. And so we, all this, all, all of state of California, we all have to use the same template. And so some. And so sometimes we have to update, which we'll be doing hopefully before June thirtieth. This just talks more about the purpose of the local plan committee. They're reviewing our governance and our administration. We really are giving them information about what we offer as a district, and we also solicit input. Next slide. These are the legal references for the law in terms of ID and what we offer as a district. Next slide. And I am complete.
Thank you so much, Ms. Neely Johnson. Testing, okay. Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have one public comment. Angela Silver Lima, please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
I think they put down their hand. Oh, thank you. Okay, board, we're gonna now move to questions. Is there anyone with questions? Okay, then let's move to comments. But before actually we do comments, is there a motion? Clerk Smith Folds?
I move that we accept the hearing of the annual service plan and special education annual budget plan.
A second. Okay, now let's move to comments. Or are there any comments on this item? Clerk Smith Folds?
I just want to thank you for the hard work. I really learn a lot going to the CAC meetings. And I appreciate how much more educated I come after I leave one of the, the CAC meetings. And the work of special ed that we have in our district should be really highlighted. It's a really great, that's a really great program, and I look forward to implementation of this plan. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. I don't see any hands, so let's move to a vote. And again, the motion is to accept the plan, which is the same thing as approved, so just to clarify. Trustee Santos, we'll start with you.
Santos, yes.
Thank you, trustee Veron.
Veron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
And trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. This is passed unanimously with one trustee absent. Thank you so much. Now we're gonna move to item E two. And this item is Dr. Greenwood's. Dr. Greenwood, are you on the Zoom?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening.
Trustees. This is a recommendation to the California Teaching Commission, Commission. This is called a declaration of need. This gives us an opportunity, we have to submit this yearly to the commission. This is a projection of how many, how many, I'm sorry, I'm trying to change screens, how many, how many areas of need that we think we will have next year for permits that we have to submit, and so we can, we can't apply for permits without having this application on file with the commission. So the recommendation is to approve the declaration of need.
Thank you so much, Dr. Greenwood. Before we move to questions from the board, is there any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? No, okay, could I have a motion?
I move resolution number two, 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 three dash eighty, declaration of need for fully and qualified educators.
Say.
Say. Thank you. Are there any comments on this item? Okay, let's move to a vote. We'll start with trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Trustee Veron.
Veron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Passed unanimously with one trustee absent. Thank you. Now we're gonna move to E three. Dr. Greenwood, I believe this is also your item.
Also, this is an annual statement of need. This is also gives us the ability to file with the California Teacher Commission, the thirty-day substitute. And so we have to have this on file to be able to file for thirty-day substitute for the upcoming school year. So we would need approval for this as well.
Thank you, Dr. Greenwood. Is there any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, can I have a motion on this item, please?
I would like to move resolution two, 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 three dash eighty-one, declaration to hire thirty-day substitute on Seabass waivers.
And I will, thank you, thank you, trustee Veron, you seconded it before me. Okay, are there any comments? All right, let's move to a vote. We'll start with trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Trustee Veron?
Veron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, passed unanimously. Thank you so much, Dr. Greenwood. Okay, now we're gonna move to item E four. This is Dr. Hurst's item, but I'm gonna introduce it on his behalf. And I'm gonna be introducing the next three items, actually. For E four, it's the approval of the interim associate superintendent of educational services contract. Pursuant to government code, section five, four, nine, five, three subdivision C three, the governing board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits recommendation for local agency executive, Sonia Neely Johnson. First, is the interim appointment to the position of associate superintendent and chief academic officer. Second, this will become effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at an annual salary of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. And the health and welfare benefits conumerate with those available to all management employees. And if eligible, an educational stipend conumerate, commensurate, sorry, with that available to all management employees. Yeah, I'm very excited, board, to introduce this item to you all. But before we go into any questions, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Oh, one public comment.
Ms. Maisha Harris Gash, please unmute yourself.
I just want to say, I'm gonna miss you being a leader in special education, Ms. Neely Johnson. I know that you will always be around. I'm super, super excited for you. So I look forward to seeing you and congratulating you in person. Once again, congratulations.
That's it for public comment.
Thank you so much. All right, board, are there any questions? Okay, can I have a motion for the approval of this appointment?
I move that we approve the interim, approval of the interim associate superintendent of education services contract.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. Board, are there any comments? Clerk Smith Folds?
Congratulations. I'm very excited to have you in this role, and I look forward to working with you for the changes. Thank you. I'm complete.
Board, any other comments? I just want to say, Ms. Neely Johnson, we're really excited for you to take on this position. Thank you for stepping up and doing it. We look forward, I look forward to seeing all the amazing things you do in this new role. Although you leave an amazing role as well, because you've done such great change in special education. So thank you for that work, and I'm excited to see what you do next. So congratulations. All right, board, let's move to a vote. We'll start with trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Thank you, trustee Veron.
Veron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Congratulations. Next item is the approval of the interim associate superintendent of business services contract. Pursuant to the government governance code, section five, four, nine, five, three subdivision C three, the governing board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits recommendation for local agency executive Kim Moses. This for the interim appointment to the position of associate superintendent, chief business officer. This will be effective July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at an annual salary of two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents. And health and welfare benefits consumer commensurate with those available to all management employees. And if eligible, an educational stipend commensurate with that available to all management employees. Board, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you, I almost forgot. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, could I please have a motion on this item? Clerk Smith Folds?
I would like to move approval of interim associate superintendent of business services contract.
Say.
Wonderful. Are there any comments? Clerk Smith Folds?
I would like to congratulate Ms. Moses. I know that she will be amazing in this position, and I look forward to working with her. This is gonna be great. I'm complete.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? For me, Ms. Moses, I also want to congratulate you. Thank you for stepping onto this role. What I'm really excited about you is that you have quite a bit of knowledge of our district. So I know that Dr. McIntyre will probably fill you in a lot of the work that they've been doing. But I'm excited that we won't have to provide you with the community context, because you are from this community. So thank you, thank you for stepping in at a difficult time for our district financially. I'm excited to see what we can accomplish next year. All right, board, let's move to a vote. Trustee Santos, we'll start with you.
Santos, yes.
Trustee Veron?
Veron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Trustee Phillips is not present. It passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Moses. Our last appointment is for the approval of interim associate superintendent of human resources contract. Pursuant to government code, section five, four, nine, five, three subdivision C three, the governing board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefit recommendation for local agency executive Dr. Camille Johnson. This for interim appointment to the position of associate superintendent of human resources. It's effective July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at an annual salary of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. And health and welfare benefits conumerate with those available to all management employees. And if eligible, an educational stipend commensurate with the available to all management employees. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, board, could I have a motion for this item? Clerk Smith Folds?
I will move the approval of interim associate superintendent of human resources contract.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, trustee Santos. Are there any comments? Okay, board, let's move to a vote. We'll start with trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Trustee Veron?
Veron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Abstain.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. It passes with one abstention. Congratulations, Dr. Johnson. Okay, we're now moving to E seven. Excuse me. Dr. McIntyre, I think this is your item, correct? I don't think your mic might be working.
Yes, Mr. Christian, it is.
Thank you so much. I'll pass it to you.
Thank you. Tonight, we have with us the district's fiscal advisor, as well as the attorney for all of the district's bond work. We're bringing back the item that we discussed at the last board meeting, where we have an opportunity to do a refinancing of his existing debt. And so tonight, I want to bring up Mr. Blake Bohm to speak, or Blake Tyler. Okay, wanted to bring up a member of the team, the finance team from KNN, to talk to us about the, some of the questions we had at the last meeting. We want to talk about the structure and the costs, and kind of, you know, how the plan fits within the board's existing debt policy.
Sorry, one second. Have you pressed the face, the button with the face on it? On the mic? There we go.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. McIntyre. Good evening, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be back. As Robert mentioned, this is a follow-up to our last, to the board's last meeting, where the district in conjunction with the existing refinancing policy is considering a potential tender of outstanding bonds. This would be an opportunity to investors to sell bonds back, and an opportunity for the district to buy those bonds back at a discount, utilizing proceeds for a refunding issuance that would ultimately save taxpayer dollars with direction from the board at the last meeting. The bond financing team has been underway with a bond identification process. That process is still underway in terms of those bondholders for outstanding bonds that would be invited to tender their bonds back at a particular price. This evening, on the agenda are financing documents, including an authorizing resolution for the board's consideration to authorize formally this opportunity and allow the bond financing team to continue moving down the process. So in conjunction with the authorizing resolution, there are a variety of corresponding financing documents. And I'm here tonight, along with Graham Beck, to answer any questions. Should the board have any in regards to the process, the documents in particular, or, or anything along the lines of this particular refinancing opportunity?
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Board, who would like to start? Clerk Smith Folds, go ahead.
So I have one question. When I'm looking at the document, it says financial impact none. But wasn't this the thing that was gonna cost us to go see if the people were on the list or go get the list? That's, that's what we're talking about, right? And that was thirty thousand dollars, is that correct, to go see if we can find the people on the list? Am I remembering accurately?
You are remembering that correctly. It's currently included within the cost of issuance of the potential refinancing at an estimated amount of forty thousand. So we just, for conservative purposes, identified that fee amount. To the extent that this transaction moves forward, there would, I think it's listed within this item as no financial impact, because if this item were to move forward and successfully close there, this would be paid for out of bond proceeds and not from the district's general fund. To the extent this item is approved tonight, the transaction were to move forward and for circumstances that either there wasn't a critical mass of bondholders that were willing to tender their bonds, or various other reasons this transaction were not to conclude successfully with a refinancing, then there would be, that would be the one item that would have costs still owed, and that would need to be paid. And that's what was discussed at the last board meeting, and is what you're remembering from that last discussion.
Let me just make sure that I'm accurate. If we don't get people to say yes to selling back their bonds to the district, and everybody's like, nope, don't want to do it, then the district will then have to pay forty thousand dollars to whomever. Is that accurate?
Correct.
I'm complete, President Gonzalez-Loy.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Board, any? Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Board, any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Let's move to a motion. Or is there a motion? Okay, I move that we approve resolution number two, 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 three, dash, eight, three.
Smith Folds, seconds.
Thank you. Board, are there any comments? Clerk Smith Folds?
Uh, Board, I'm trying to figure out, this is like a forty thousand dollar gamble. So I will be voting no because it's a forty thousand dollar gamble and I just don't. I understand it and I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate what we're trying to do, which is to save the taxpayers money and that's what we should we should ultimately want to do it. But right now in the financial position that I believe we're in, I don't think that it's worth the forty thousand dollar gamble. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Any other comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Trusty Santos?
Santos abstain.
And Trusty Baron?
Baron abstain.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, no.
Trusty Christian? It's a yes. You got it on me.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Trusty Phillips?
Abstain.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. So it does not pass, correct? Because it was one no and one abstention?
Because we have.
Okay, okay, so it does not pass. Thank you. Uh, Dr. McIntyre is the next item yours.
Yes, Mr. President, it is. Thank you. Tonight, we're bringing forth the resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, dash, eighty-four requesting the Board of Supervisors of the county of Contra Costa, in the county of the county of Contra Costa to establish tax rates for the bonds of West Contra Costa County Unified School District outstanding during the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal years and authorize necessary actions in connection therewith. So the district currently has bonds outstanding under separate voter-approved general obligation bond authorities. Each bond authorization has its own tax rate target based on the tax rate statement presented to voters at the time of the election. The district's Board of Education has made it a priority to maintain tax rates at or below the target levels presented to the voters at the time of each election, to the extent possible, consistent with the principles of prudent debt management. The district believes that setting up a reserve has been a key factor in allowing the district to consistently meet this goal for over twenty years, including times with significant economic volatility. In each fiscal year, in order to maintain the tax rates at the level presented to voters at the time of each election, the district adopts this tax rate resolution and is adopting this resolution for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four as it has in the past. The district is requesting, district staff is requesting that the county set the twenty-three, twenty-four tax rates at the target level of sixty dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value for the twenty-twenty measure R bonds consistent with the past levy and consistent with the information presented to the voters in the twenty-twenty election. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McIntyre. Is there any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Board, are there any questions? Clerk Smith Folds?
Dr. McIntyre, inside the summary, you said that there is a reserve set aside. Where does that reserve money come from? I'm assuming you're talking about a reserve of money. Is that correct?
So when each taxpayer pays their property tax bill in April and December, that money goes to the county treasury. It doesn't come to us. It doesn't go in our coffers at all. It stays with the county tax assessor. We recognize those revenues in Fund Fifty-One in our financial statement, but we don't touch those dollars. What we do do is set our rate to ensure when that tax bill comes due twice a year or when we make those payments that there's enough money there. We're in a situation right now where we, when we put forth measure R, we had thought by this next year, we would be starting on construction on our two high schools. And we've heard Lewis's team talk about where we are in the process and getting feedback from the board, and that's been a real iterative process that's really involved the board every step of the way. But in doing so, we're a little behind that original, when we put measure R forward, we're a little behind that original timeline, which is not unusual. And so what we're looking here to do is maintain consistency with the tax rate for our taxpayer rather than seeing wild volatility and swings between year to year. And so to the extent that a reserve is built, it stays in the the county treasury and it can be used to early pay the debt and save the taxpayers over time as well.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong. This is kind of like when you pay your mortgage, but you put your property tax inside the mortgage. So when you're paying the mortgage, you're also paying the property tax. So the bill doesn't come due at the end of the year. So what we're doing is we're allowing the county or wanting the county to take a little bit of money or whatever, set it aside. So when this comes due, when we have to pay at the end of the cycle or whatever, the money's there. Is that accurate or no?
Yes, ma'am.
I am complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Or are there any other questions on this item? Okay, is there a motion?
I move resolution two, 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 three, dash, eight, four requesting the Board of Supervisors of the county of Contra Costa to establish tax rates for the bonds of West Contra Costa Unified School District outstanding during fiscal year twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four and authorizing necessary actions in connection therewith.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Hi, second.
Thank you, Trusty Santos. Are there any comments on this item? Okay, let's move to a vote. Trusty Santos, we'll start with you.
Santos, yes.
Trusty Baron?
Baron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Thank you, Trusty Christian?
Uh, yes.
Trusty Reckler? Welcome back, by the way. No, okay. Sorry, everybody, for the public. Trusty Reckler just walked in from the graduation. I apologize for putting her on the spot. Trusty Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes as well. It passes. Thank you, Dr. McIntyre. Uh, we're gonna move to item E nine. Ms. Logan, is this your item? I'll pass it to you. Thank you.
It is. Thank you. Good evening, Board, community colleagues. And I'm going to share my screen. And I am joined here this evening by my colleague Lori Roberts, who will also be partnering with me in this presentation. So I am excited to come here this evening and talk with you about our proposal for our path forward for classroom projection. This has been a two-year project in the making. It has involved many school sites, teachers, principals, students to gather input on what is the right classroom projection standard for our district going forward. So a quick overview of current state. At this time, approximately seventy percent of our classroom projectors will need to be replaced within the next two years. Our projectors are approaching end of life, so we need a solution. This presentation is about the particular solution that we are recommending. So we started this work two years ago as we were returning from distance learning, surveyed teachers about their needs for classroom projection. We then embarked on a pilot, which has happened over the course of this year. We piloted classroom projectors as well as Promethean panels in thirteen of our schools. We approached this pilot carefully and thoughtfully. We had pre pilot surveys, post-pilot surveys of teachers as well as students to get their feedback. And then lastly, we did a total cost of ownership analysis, knowing that every dollar we spend is precious and we want to be very careful about how we spend public funds. What you see here in front of you is what the pilot looked like over the last year. So there were a couple of schools, Verdi, Montalban, and Chavez, who embarked on purchasing Promethean active panels on their own using site funds. They joined our pilot and we began piloting with thirteen schools over the course of this year. The pilot had a rotation. Each teacher would have the board in their room for about six weeks. It would move on to other teachers to get a chance to try it out and for students and teachers to provide feedback. There was training before the pilot, during the pilot. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we have surveys and survey results. So you can see here, over the course of the pilot, we had approximately two hundred and twenty teachers use the active panel at the school's name below. Seventy-seven percent of those teachers said they would be thrilled if the active panel became the standard for projection across our district. And seventy-four point eight percent of teachers agreed that the active panel was easily viewed by all students, no matter where they were in the classroom. And I can say personally, as I walked classrooms and talked with teachers and students, the main feedback that I heard from students was, I can see the board. Doesn't matter where I'm sitting. Doesn't matter how much light saturation there is in the room, for instance, in a class like at Lupine where there are beautiful skylights, but the light saturation makes it very hard to see projection. The panels were visible for all students and accessibility is important.
So at this time, I want to show you these wonderful teacher testimonials. I'll step back. I guess I'm a little too loud with my teacher voice. But what I wanted to share with you is that in my twenty-five years with the district, I've seen everything from slides and film strips to overhead projectors to the projectors that we have now. And so I have a confession to make. I was not terribly enthused about the active panels at first. I had a lot of concerns based on previous pilots that we had gone through of interactive whiteboards. But I have spent the last few months visiting classrooms and checking in with teachers, students, and principals. And what I have seen has turned my initial apathy into enthused excitement. Teachers have been using the active panel as a projector, of course, but many have used it innovatively to make their lessons more engaging. With features such as the spinner, timers, and annotation app, they have tools at their fingertips to select students or groups quickly, track time, and better illustrate or comment on their content. Better yet, all of these tools can be used by their students, making lessons more engaging. You can see from these comments that the Promethean active panels are easily used, versatile tools. Of note is the comment in the middle from the teacher who wanted the active panel back in her room. Which reminds me, this is the first time that I have ever encountered so many teachers willing to throw down over the loss of the active panel when their turns were up. And I even had one teacher who threatened to chain himself to it so it wouldn't be taken from his room. Next slide, please. So it wasn't just the teachers. It was the students as well. At the end of the first rotation, I received reports of students crying as the active panel was rolled out of their rooms. And as you can see, active panels make a difference in accessibility. The graph on the left shows how visible it is from anywhere in the classroom. Many teachers commented on the active panels' excellent speakers, which can be connected to the wireless mics in the classrooms. The graph on the right speaks for itself. The students have weighed in and they prefer the active panel over our current projectors. Next slide, please. So here are just five comments from our students. We had over nineteen hundred students complete the active panel feedback form throughout the year. The one in the upper left corner calls out the great sound system and its effect on engagement. Both of the comments toward the bottom talk about the student use of the active panel. My favorite comment that isn't included here was it's a touchscreen and it's big like a tablet for Godzilla. I just would like you to note that there is really excellent use of simile in that comment. Next slide, please. So I think, yeah, it is moving. There are some videos on this slide. The active panel is truly a multi-content tool. It can be used by teachers and students for basically anything. We have examples here of movement, basic presentation, getting set up for centers, doing math, doing writing, and doing science as well. Next slide.
So as Laurie pointed out, and you can see in the videos, student access to learning was one of the key criteria for determining this proposal for active panels to become our standard. Student access to learning, as Laurie said, is the visual piece of being able to see the board for wherever you are in the room. And it's also the ability to hear. So one of the benefits and beauties of these panels is that teachers can connect in all of the existing technology. So they can connect in the Red Cat. They can connect in the DocCam or the Ladybug. They can use their laptop or not use the laptop because it can be a standalone machine. So it really provides flexibility for teachers, whether you are a tech-savvy, tech-excited teacher or not so much, it can really meet you where you are. And the last piece is long-term sustainability, which I'll talk a bit more about in a moment. So as I mentioned, accessibility is key. We did this pilot in elementary, middle, and high schools. We made sure that we got feedback from gen ed students, special ed students and teachers across the board and at all grade levels. Much of what we heard from teachers was the ability to simplify tedious tasks so that they can focus their time and efforts on student learning. And the last piece is around cost and long-term financial sustainability. So what this graph represents, the red is the Promethean active panel, the blue are projector carts. So as you can see in year one, the cost of Prometheans are more than double that a projector cart. So at first glance, it would seem to make sense. We need to be mindful of every penny we spend, that we should not even consider active panels, but go with projector carts. However, what you see over time, the total cost of ownership, over twenty years, we actually end up saving money in investing in Promethean boards. Prometheans are half the amount after over twenty years than projector carts. And we start to notice that break-even point at year five. The reason being the cost of repair, the cost of support, replacement parts is much greater for projector carts than it is with the active panel, not to mention all of the intangibles that we are provided with active panels that we cannot get with the functionality of a projector on a cart. So in conclusion, based on teacher and student feedback and our total cost analysis, we are recommending that the Promethean active panel on a cart, meaning that it's mobile and can be placed anywhere in the classroom, regardless of size and makeup of the classroom. And we have these boards in some pretty small, crammed classrooms, become the standard for classroom projection in our district. Tonight, we are asking for a phase one approval. So we will approach this in four phases. We've learned from the pilot that it's very useful for teachers to have time to tinker and play around with the active panel before it becomes the thing I must use every day in my classroom. So we want to take that learning from the pilot and model our rollout based on that. So we're proposing that we use one-time S R funds. Again, this is not general fund. This is one-time dollars, some of which, half of which expire at the end of September. The September we must spend, the other of which we must spend by the following September. So we recommend that we use one-time S R funds to fully furnish the pilot sites, one in every classroom, as well as provide a base number to rotate, much like we did in the pilot at the rest of our schools. And then for phase one, for phase two, three, and four, which would happen over the next eighteen months, that those ten to twelve schools for each of the subsequent phases would be chosen based on school's readiness as determined by the site leader and our ed tech team. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Logan and Ms. Roberts. I really appreciate it. I see a few hands. So is there a public comment? Let's get started. Thank you.
Our first public comment is Ms. Sargentini. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, thank you. This is Kim Dour, Sargentini Kindergarten Lupine Hills, and I was a pilot teacher. And I actually kind of agreed with what Lori said in the beginning. I thought, oh, I don't want this thing. I don't know what I'm going to do with it. But I have to say, I have changed my mind with TTL help, which is like our tech leaders and Lori and office hours. I was able to set it up. I was able to start using it. I feel like I've only scratched the surface, but it's such a game changer. I mean, my students can't really see when I project. They tell it to me every day, even when I shut the blinds and turn off the lights, which takes a lot of time to do multiple times a day. With the panel, they were able to see everything. With the panel, they were able to see everything. And I could lower it, and they could actually touch the screen, or I could raise it up if I didn't want them to touch the screen. I was able to lock it when we weren't using it. The sound is such a difference from the speakers I have. And using one-time funds just sounds like it's a good deal to me. So I urge you to vote yes.
Our next public comment is Nasi and Riza. Hey, Dari, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board trustees. This is Principal Hiday from Grant Elementary School. I am calling in support of the Promethean whiteboards because I have seen such an increase in student engagement. And the boards across the classrooms that they were in use promoted collaboration among students. And we want to see movement by our teachers. The old setup that we have with the overhead projections, either the projectors don't work, they're missing a bulb, they're not connecting to the laptops properly. But through the use of the interactive board, teachers can move around and they can utilize the activities player so that students are engaged and they're moving around and checking in with students. So I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Hey, good evening. I work at Verde, and I'm another kindergarten teacher. I believe Verde might have been one of the original pilots. My kids love these panels, except half of them can't reach it. I do not have the movable one. I really, really hope I can get that remedied. The other downfall for me is that my kids only got their vision tested two weeks ago, and three of my seventeen kids failed. So I have a huge screen that I had donor choose so that they can see, and the panel isn't quite the same size for them to see. But other than that, they love this thing. They love to play games on it. Ha, ha, ha. They're really practicing spelling and math, but they don't know it. And just they'll go up and they'll do their math problems on it. They've learned how to erase. They'll hit it to make sure it doesn't turn off. I mean, they're getting better at this thing than I am. I would totally encourage us to get these for all the different classes that we can.
Our next public comment is Julie Willis. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Julie Willis. I am the ESN primary teacher at Collins Elementary. And I had the great opportunity of piloting the active panel. I again agree with everyone and encourage a yes vote on this, not just for the student engagement issues, but also for physical safety issues. I have to have my projector cart in the middle of the room, which allows students to bump into it, trip over cords. And so with having the active panel, I was able to put that away and have it against the wall. And it was just such, in terms of their physical safety, so much easier. So again, I encourage this especially for our ESN classrooms. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Christine Hatcher. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Christine Hatcher. I'm principal at Riverside Elementary School. We were fortunate enough to be one of the schools that piloted the Promethean active panels. And yes, my teachers were excited when they received and very upset when they were rotated out. I think, I don't want to be redundant with all of the previous speakers, but what I do want to say is, we were fortunate enough to see our students with neurodiverse learning needs really engage with what was happening in the classroom, in no small part due to the accessibility of the active panels. We had students who had different types of learning needs. Our kinesthetic learners could get up and move things around. Kids who were more visual and needed to see things were actually able to do that. I know that we talk a lot about technology and the benefit of technology. Sometimes we talk about the difficulties, but this would be dollars well spent, I believe. So I hope that the board is forward-thinking enough to move ahead with this purchase.
And our last public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Evening. I'm at Kennedy High School, special education teacher. I'm a resource specialist. And so I did see it on our campus. I'm just curious of, in this rollout, how many secondary sped teachers across all the levels used it, experienced it with their students, sometime about high school and middle school? Like I said, I saw it on my campus. And I believe it was Principal Hatchett just talked about students who are neurodiverse. As some know, that we have more and more students on the autism spectrum that are being mainstreamed. But yet, they do have a tutorial class to help them. But to also be able to have these boards in the RSP rooms to assist those students. So there's still some similarity of things going on between the gen ed class and the resource class. So I would just ask that you look into that and make sure there's equity.
Thank you so much to all the people who made public comment. Board, we're now moving to questions. Would anyone like to get a start on questions? Clerk Smith Folds?
Thank you so much, President Gonzalez-Hoy. Thank you, Ms. Logan, for your presentation. I do have three questions. Technology moves so quickly. When will Promethean boards be equated to chalkboards? Right? When is it going to go past that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I can't predict when that will happen. I will tell you that we would have a warranty with these Promethean boards. So the software is sure to be updated and the hardware as well during that five-year period. But another thing that we're doing for these boards that I think really future-proofs them is we're adding a Chrome box on the back, which basically turns that big screen into kind of like a big Chromebook. Think of it as like an iPad or a Chromebook on wheels. And that Chrome box in the graph that you saw where there's cost over five years would need to be replaced every five years or so. But it's about a cost of two hundred bucks or less. And that technology is only going to improve, get better, get cheaper, get faster, get smarter. And so I believe that even if the Promethean software itself dies out in ten years, we still have a high-functioning vessel where we can attach a Chrome box or something similar that takes it to the next level and is the epitome of technology standards of the day.
Thank you so much. My next question is, what does readiness look like? And can you speak to that and its connection to equity?
Absolutely. And Ms. Roberts, I invite you to weigh in here, too. Readiness is a combination of making sure that enough teachers on site have had a chance to try out the board. So enough meaning a diversity of folks, different grade levels, different content levels, gen ed, special ed, et cetera, and that we get that feedback from folks, that there's been an opportunity for folks to receive the training and had a chance to try things on. I think it's also about readiness in terms of providing teacher voice to say, "This initiative is the right time for us and our school, given everything else we have going on." So our proposal is that this rollout happen everywhere, that that's not a choice or a question, but that staff at sites have a voice and when that happens, so that we're not overloading, so that we're really making sure that folks are set up for success. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, we're also providing support in terms of our tech teacher leaders. So there's one per site, and they will be specially trained to support the teachers at their sites. And also, they will be facilitating collaborative groups so that grade levels can come together and talk about how they're using the active panels.
Thank you so much, President Gonzalez-Hoy. I believe I'm complete. I think I stacked that last question, so I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Tracy Phillips, go ahead.
There was a comment made about this being the standard going forward. So is there any movement to change the ed specs? So this is officially the standard, not just someone saying that?
Yeah, so if this is approved tonight, that would be a next step in the process. So we would work closely with facilities, change the ed spec. It would become the standard for Lake. It would become the standard for any new build or modernization going forward.
Does that mean that we would have two standards? Because every school thus far is not being rebuilt or modernized.
So it would become the standard going forward. And as we build, modernize it, that would be the standard for the new build. But at the same time, we would be replacing existing classroom projection in all of our schools with the Promethean panel over the next eighteen months. Does that answer your question?
It does. So tonight, with the board... So tonight, the board is essentially voting to change the ed specs in this particular area without that directly being before us.
Yes, you could say so.
Yes, that is something we can look into, is changing the ed spec to match the new standard for the Promethean boards.
That's not the question I asked.
The question was whether or not we have the ability to change the policy of our specs for all of our schools tonight by passing this item, which consequently does, from what I'm hearing in this conversation, by passing new technology. Did I capture that correctly?
Yeah, so we can do that. The board can actually move forward with that.
Tracy Phillips, do you want to?
I just seem to remember hearings for our ed specs, like a process, not just like us coming one day and being like, "We're going to change it." I could be wrong, but that's what I seem to remember. Do you want us to get back with you, sir, or no? Okay.
Trustee Reckler, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you. So I think the majority of them were answered, but I want to be clear that this is a rollout that starts a change in every classroom and in every school in the fleet, correct?
It does. I will qualify that we've had a couple of recent builds. Pinal Valley High, Obama, they have new projection. We would not be making the change in the short term in those schools.
Okay, the next question is that I am... I want to clarify the shelf life. So over the course of twenty years, there's a savings. But there was also a mention of perhaps a five-year shelf life. So may you clarify how long we think this investment will last?
Yes, so the investment should last twenty years. The hardware will last, the Chrome box on the back that we attach to it, we will replace every five years, and therefore, with that refresh, it will last. The Promethean software has a warranty of five years. So that's what we have for the short term. And then thereafter, we can look at potentially continuing on. Doesn't mean after the warranty that it won't work, but the guarantee and the support is for five years. But the shelf life of the overall tool and technology is twenty years.
Okay. And then finally, is the entire... Is the entire purchase funded through Esser? And then, when Esser expires, how is this afforded?
So the entire purchase over the next eighteen months, which totals just under five million dollars, will be, would be, from Esser funds. They are earmarked for that purpose. Thereafter, the annual cost for maintenance, Chrome box replacement, et cetera, would come out of general fund dollars, just as it does now, out of our general fund IT budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more questions. Is there a motion, board? Clerk Smith Folds?
I move Promethean active display panels for schools.
Sorry, Clerk Smith Folds, if I could just clarify...
I move for approval of the Promethean active display panels for schools.
For Phase One deployment?
For Phase, I'm sorry?
Because we're only purchasing a certain amount.
Oh, for Phase One. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second since I was... Sorry.
And I'd like to put another motion on the floor or to ask the parliamentarian. I am not entirely sure that we can vote on this because I do agree that I think that this leads into a change in ed spec. And I don't believe that it's agenda is properly to do that.
I think that if it wasn't, our staff would have caught it. I think that if we are, then we'll have to bring it back anyways if we pass it because we can't pass something illegal, right? So we would have to bring it back if we pass something that is not appropriate according to our policy.
I think hearing that trustee, that those parliamentarian agrees with that. Yes, okay, thank you.
Ms. Freeze, did you want to add something?
I was just going to add that we are bringing a facility update in the month of July, at which time we can bring back modifications to our education specifications that would adjust this particular item in the ed spec for the Promethean boards as we move forward, and it would affect the Lake project as well.
Well, I think that probably the question that my colleagues on the right are thinking is, why would we not just bring that first and then do this second? But could you... Could either you or Ms. Logan answer the question about, is there any harm on postponing this so that we can have that conversation? Like, would it stop the rollout and would it not create... Would it push back the timeline and would we not be ready for our classrooms if we push back this vote for after the spec modifications?
So I can speak to timeline and impact on start of school. So if we delay a number of weeks, it will impact. We won't be able to get the hardware in time for the start of school. I would also be concerned about the training and orientation that needs to be scheduled with resources available for start of school. And then the third concern is that with this purchase, and I didn't spell it out in the presentation, apologies, it is in the precis, though, is that we would get from Promethean a dedicated ONE FTE education consultant, which is someone who would support us with the rollout, training, orientation, adoption, et cetera. And they will not commit that resource until we have a PO. And then there's a two-month process thereafter. So we would not be ready in time for school, is the bottom line.
Thank you. Board, this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to do a ruling from the chair, which is that we are going to take a vote on this. Thank you. Board, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna do a ruling from the chair, which is that we are gonna take a vote on this. Obviously, there can be another motion made, but that's gonna be my ruling on this item. Okay. Um, trustee Phillips, do you have um, another motion to make?
Just comments when it's time.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So, um. Twenty years uh, is a long time. Um, and in twenty years, none of us will be here. Which is why I raised the question of are the ed specs actually going to be changed? Because five years from now, seven years from now, someone else could be saying, hey, let's make this the standard. Because we saw this and we think it's really good. And so I want it. Um, if this is the best thing for us, for there to be some memorialization. So that's why I brought that up. Um, the second thing uh, that I wanna say is that. While I understand rolling it out in the beginning and not requiring people to use it. I don't know that that's the best idea. So if you recall when we got the tablets. Right? There were teachers who used them and there were teachers who never took them out. And then when it was time to take them out, there were teachers, some teachers who had a lot of trouble. Because there was no requirement, um, even minimal requirement that they were actually used. And so I think that while the soft landing i- is appreciated. And while it doesn't have to be a super hard landing, we might wanna firm that landing up a little bit to make sure that there's at least some minimal usage. Uh, by staff because we want to them to be ready when it's required. And, and in addition to that, we wanna make sure that uh, if this item passes, that the products are being used because they're expensive.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Um, clerk Smith Folds, you're next, and then I'll go to.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Ms. Logan. Thank you for um, breaking it down and explaining it to us in a very concise way. Um, Dr. Hurst, I wanna, my comment is that your staff works very hard to prepare these presentations. And to make sure that we have accurate information. I wanna make sure that the board is using the one-on-one times to ask these questions. So when we come to presentation time at the district or at the dais. That we have most of our questions answered, so it can just be a projection to the public. So what I saw tonight was a lot of questions that probably could have been asked in one-on-ones. And then that could have been incorporated into the presentation and then that brought back to the board. So I think it's very imperative that we make sure that we are uh. Following the process and that we're all following the process. And to that end, I also wanna make sure that we all are um. Counting to four, so we're not stacking questions, that we're counting to three or we're counting to four and we're all on the same page with that. Uh, again, Ms. Logan, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm excited that it's coming from one-time funding and not from the general budget. And I'm also excited to see these in use in our schools. I am complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Um. Uh, trustee Barron?
Yeah, so we actually have some of these um, Promethean boards at RHS. Um, I've uh, used them before in our classes. Um, and they're very, they're very innovative. They're very. Um, it's a really good and intelligent way of helping students interact more with class. Um, I've seen students before that before weren't very interested in or just weren't really engaging into whatever lessons we were learning that day. And I have seen that the Promethean board, even for someone who's already in twelfth grade, it really does help. They. It's easier to see, it's easier to use. Um, you get the hang of it really quickly. Um, I had to present about it at an event that our law academy had. Um, and it's pretty easy to present about. You can teach people how to use it really easily. It's not hard. Um, I'm glad that it's a sus- sustainable thing as well. Um, and I, I think. Teachers and students will be able to really make it um, worth what it is to purchase and everything. Um, so it's a really innov- i- innovative thing. It's really sustainable and it's really engaging for students. It's something that will definitely help students. Um, improve and become more successful. So, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Barron. Trustee Santos?
Um, yeah, so I also wanted to touch on it. I got the experience, is it not from middle college, but actually from one of the schools I was doing the testing. I believe it was Verde. Um, because I was doing recruitment with middle college. Um, and I really wanna add on the um, the idea that it's really easy to use and really easy to understand. Because of the fact that it's so much like a computer. Um, I know I walked in, I didn't know that's what I was gonna be presenting on, but they just like brought it up to me. I looked at it for a second and they're like, oh, you can just log into your Google account. And then it was literally just a computer. They even like handed me a keyboard over and they're like, you can just type this up right now. Um. So it was like definitely really easy to use and especially if the teachers and the students have had experience with like their Chromebooks. It is essentially just a Chromebook, but bigger. I liked the little simile that the student had about it being a tablet for Godzilla because. It's pretty much just a really big tablet. Um, it's very straightforward to use and. I think that's very helpful in terms of like understanding. I'm a little mad that it's coming out when I'm graduating. Um. But it's definitely very helpful and I am very much for this idea.
Thank you, trustee Santos. Um, okay, so for my comments, um, I do agree that we should move forward with this item. I absolutely agree with modernizing our classrooms. Um, I really appreciate the view long-term and the savings. Um, I really appreciate seeing that, uh, cause I've always wondered how do we maintain our uh, projectors, which are very, very expensive. So. Uh, I'm glad we made that study. Um, I also really appreciate our Prometheans that it opens up more space. So since you don't use the whiteboards anymore, which take on so much space of the classroom, teachers actually have more space to put up things on the wall. Which is actually good for students, right? Because they're able to reference so many other things, right? So it actually frees more educational space. Um, and then projectors just have so many problems, right? So it's nice that we're finally moving away from that. Uh, from that technology. Uh, and I agree with everything the teachers called in and said about the difficulties of projection. I've been in a classroom, there's bright. And it's like twelve o'clock, it's super bright. They don't even have the lights turned off and you can see clearly on the Promethean. So. Um, and that technology has really uh, done great work. Um, I do think that we should bring back. The specs piece and the facilities master plan in July. Um, so I appreciate that, Mr. Freeze. Um, and then to one of my colleagues' uh, point, um, I, I hope that we have some usage goals, right? That we are implementing and trying to get to. Um, I'll tell you all that my wife's already very excited, Lori, to go to your PD about Promethean boards. She told me about it and I'm actually coming because she told me about it. I'm so excited. So I'm gonna actually log in. On your PD of Promethean boards in August because uh, you made it sound so exciting. So anyways, thank you, everybody. Um, let's move on to our vote. We'll start with trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Trustee Barron?
Barron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
I'm staying.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much. It passes. With one abstention. Um, okay, now we're gonna move on to our discussion items. Uh, we have two big items. Uh, we're starting with our LCAP. Uh, Dr. McIntyre, I believe that this is yours and Ms. Huffman's item. Pass it to you both.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I believe Ms. Huffman is gonna pull up the, or the team is pulling up the presentation.
Think it's up. Good evening, board. Superintendent Hurst, community and parents. Sorry. Um, we're bringing before you today the LCAP, which is our local control accountability plan. This is being presented to the board as part of our public hearing in accordance with education code. Five, two, zero, six, zero, and four, two, one, two, seven. The final twenty twenty-three LCAP is scheduled for adoption at the meetings of the Board of Education on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, can we go back to the first slide? Thank you. Before we um, begin further, I just wanna acknowledge and thank um, business services supporting with the LCAP. Uh, Lynn Potter, um, educational services, all the directors and executive directors. Um, spent a great deal of time at our last ed services meeting, uh, working on completing the LCAP for this upcoming school year. So I wanna acknowledge them and thank them. All right, with that, we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So our guiding principles for all LCAP-related documents, our mission, we provide the highest quality education to enable all students to make positive life choices. Strengthen our community and successfully participate in diverse and global society. Our equity statement, the belief that all students can achieve at high levels of proficiency. And that the effects of institutionalized racism can be mitigated and cen- is central to how equity is viewed in the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Next slide, please. The three primary district goals are achieving students. Deepen the implementation of quality learning, teaching and leadership practices in our classrooms and schools. Thriving employees, maintain talented staff through compensation, supportive conditions and quality and personalized professional learning. Caring schools create powerful school and district cultures predicated. On positivity, trust, inclusion, safety and communication. Next slide, please. Um, our local control and accountability plan, the basics of it um, is C D E updated and streamlined LCAP template for twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-three, twenty-four is year three of a three-year plan. So next year, the LCAP can be completely revised. The template format allows districts to provide updates to expenditures and progress toward meeting metrics within the LCAP in subsequent years. The LCAP must focus on specific subgroups, undupi- unduplicated pupils, sorry. Low-income English learners and foster youth. The West Contra Costa Unified School District LCAP also includes specifics focused on African-Americans and special ed students. Next slide, please. The LCAP structure and content, uh, for section one, we have the plan and summary, which is our general information. It provides an overview of West Contra Costa's demographics and three-year goals that structure the LCAP, achieving students, thriving employees and caring schools. We have section two, which is on reflection, successes and identified needs, provides overview of the district's areas of strength. And areas of need based on review of data conducted earlier in the year. And detailed analysis is in local um, local control accountability plan, LCP update. Section three is the plan summary, which provides LCAP highlights, provides an overview of the continuing actions and services. As well as new and improved services. Next slide, please. Um, continue the structure and content. Section four is comprehensive support and improvement. Which provides information about West Contra Costa Unified School District schools that have been identified to receive additional funding and support. To help improve academic performance. Information about the specific support structure and monitoring, monitoring processes is also included. Section, section five are educational partners involvement. And it summarizes the processes employed to, employed to engage district educational partners in the LCAP. Development process groups include, um, which we just heard, our district local accountability plan parent. Student committee, our D O caps, our African-American parent advisory council, AIPAC. Our multilingual district advisory committee, M D A C, and our community advisory committee. Uh, C A C and our public advocates, P A and Healthy Richmond H R. Next slide, please. Section six includes goals, metrics, how we monitor our success. So all three goals, goals include metrics aligned to state. The states a priority areas, basic services, implementation of state academic standards, parent involvement, family engagement. Student achievement, student engagement, school climate, access to broad course of study and outcomes in a bar- broad course of studying. The template is set up to list metric used to monitor each priority area with the three-year growth area. At the end of each year, West Contra Costa reports on outcomes for each metric with a lens on identified three-year growth target. The outcomes for twenty-two, twenty-three have not been included in LCAP as available. Next slide, please. This is a sample of the LCAP goals and metrics uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four. And so you'll see our metric with state priority, uh, the baseline data, year one, what were the outcomes, year two, year three. And then desired outcome for twenty-three, twenty-four. Next slide, please. And section six, um, we have actions and services. Um, the themes during the initial LCAP development in twenty-twenty-one, district staff collaborated with parents and other educational partners. To identify key themes and critical areas of focus. These themes directly tie to actions and services in the LCAP and are included in each action. For the LC, for the twenty-three, twenty-four LCAP, staff have added an updated overview of the program. To complement the specific items that are funded for program implementation. The prior year budget amount has also been included in each program item description for information only. Next slide, please. In section six, we also under goals, we have analysis of twenty-two, twenty-three implementation of outcomes. Um, at the end of each goal section, staff have provided descriptions of the following for each twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three action as appropriate. Description of any substantive, substantiative. Differences in planned actions and actual implementation of these actions. Explanation of material differences between budget expenditures and estimated actual expenditures. Explanation of how effective the specific actions were in making progress toward the actual measurable outcomes. Description of any changes made to the plan, goals, metrics, desired outcomes or actions for the coming year. That resulted from reflections on prior practice. Next slide, please. Goal six, we also have unduplicated students contributing. Each action item is identified either as contributing or not contributing to supporting the needs of identified, unduplicated students. Low-income English learners, foster youth. Actions are identified as contributing when the programs primarily support and contribute to meeting the needs of identified student groups. Note, all actions in the twenty-three, twenty-four LCAP are contributing towards meeting the needs of our unduplicated students. Next slide, please. The goal one, achieving students overview, um, it includes ongoing and ongoing actions and services. For instructional support programs for career tech ed, college and career pathways, African-American black students, English learners. Literacy and intervention programs, visual and performing arts, special ed students, foster and homeless youth. Programming evaluation and monitoring international baccalaureate programs, school-based programs and in the school plan for student achievement. Next slide, please. LCAP goal two, thriving employees overview. Uh, this includes actions and services for professional development for classified and certificated staff. Recruitment and retention of staff, professional development programs for our Office of African-American Student Achievement. E-learning support and salary increases. Next slide, please. LCAP goal three, caring schools overview includes ongoing actions and services for support for African-American black students and families. Additional vice principals to support school climate, support for community engagement and outreach efforts. Support for parent training and volunteers. Additional social emotional learning programs and full-service community schools. Next slide, please. LCAP goal four, students with disabilities. Um, this is providing support to enable our special needs students uh, to achieve and thrive. Because students with disabilities were performing significantly lower than other student groups in the district. West Contra Costa must focus additional resources to c- to close the gap and accelerate learning in English learners. I mean, English language arts, my apologies, mathematics, college and career readiness. West Contra Costa has added LCAP goal four in order to strategically address the needs of our students with disabilities. Next slide, please. Um, new, we have LCAP goal five, um, which is African-American, English learner, foster youth, Hispanic, homeless. And socio-economically disadvantaged, which is providing support to enable our underperforming student groups to achieve and thrive. Because students from a variety of groups are performing significantly lower than other student groups in the district. West Contra Costa must focus additional resources to close the gaps and accelerate learning in English language arts, mathematics. College and career readiness. West Contra Costa Unified has added LCAP goal five in order to strategically address the needs of our students. From the identified groups. Next slide, please. At this time, Dr. McIntyre will take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. So as we look at slide seventeen.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. So as we look at slide seventeen, we see the, the pies that make up the revenue of the entire general fund of the school district. This is how we deliver our educational programs or the revenues we use to deliver our educational programs to our five to seventeen, eighteen-year-old students. Uh, when we look at this, we see the total revenue is about four hundred and eighty-two point two million dollars for twenty three, twenty four. But within that, we have the local control funding formula, which is where we fund our base day-to-day general ed, educational program. And that's, that's going to be about three hundred and forty-four point three million dollars next year in the local control funding formula. And a sub-part of that total funding in the LCFF is supplemental concentration grant funding. That is how we pay for the actions and services in the LCAP. That, that total is projected for next year to be sixty-two point seven million dollars after COLA is applied at that eight point two-two percent that we're gonna, we've been talking about, we will talk about in the next uh agenda item as well. And so what that leaves for, for the general fund operation is roughly two hundred and eighty-one point six million dollars to do everything what we, what we call the, the, the equity, what, what everybody gets. I'm sorry, the equality, what everybody gets, right? But that's, the LCAP really lays out the actions and services that provide or attempt to provide for equity, trying to meet and fill those gaps uh in achievement across student groups. So when we look at this, we see that the sixty-two point, point seven million dollars uh in, in the uh cap or the portion of the LCAP is about thirteen percent of total revenue uh for the district. Next slide, please. Looking at it from an expense perspective, we're going to spend sixty-two point seven million dollars in the LCAP and all the actions and services. Uh, but, but next year, we're going to spend five hundred and twenty-one point six, uh, point five million dollars. Uh, so the LCAP is really, it's thirteen percent of revenue, twelve percent of expenditures. Uh, and, and so when you think about how the state funds us, how they fund the idea of equity, true, true equity, it's not as big a chunk of the pie as you might expect, given the different population groups we're attempting to serve with all these actions and services. So I know sixty-two million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but across twenty-five thousand students with very distinct and unique needs and many different uh group, subgroups, uh, it doesn't go as far as we'd hope, but, but we are, I, but it is being applied according to the rules in the, within the LCAP. Next slide, please. Finally, one of the requirements of the LCAP is not only looking forward on what we are going to do, but a, as you heard Ms. Huffman say, looking back on what we have done. And so when we look at the twenty-two, twenty-three uh budget for the LCAP, the budget was sixty million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. And, and the district projects that not only did it budget the full amount, but that it will expend the entire amount uh for high-need students within the LCAP, that full sixty point five million dollars. And, and so with that, that concludes our presentation on the LCAP and hopefully provides the basis for the public hearing.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Huffman and Dr. McIntyre for your presentation. Um, do we have public comment on this item?
We have one public comment, Rosa Manjivar, please unmute yourself.
Sí, muchas gracias por la oportunidad. Solamente quiero um dar gracias porque han hecho esta reunión y formado todo esto. Pero también me quedo con una duda, este, como a veces están diciendo que, ah, no hay dinero o que es muy caro comprar ciertos artículos como, por ejemplo, los proyectores y todo eso. Pero, sin embargo, estaban mencionando que van a haber personas que van a poder ganar a más de doscientos mil dólares al año. Entonces, son cosas que como que no comprendo a cómo es que puede haber para la parte administrativa mucho dinero, pero para otros recursos ah estamos diciendo que no hay dinero. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Um, so one thing that we didn't do is that we didn't open for a public hearing, so I am now opening up the public hearing. Um, it's just very awkward, but we're opening. Um, okay, board. Uh, for this item, we're going to do four questions since it's a obviously more, uh, very, all of our items are important, but this one, um, one that we all care about. So, uh, we're going to do four questions. Uh, does anyone want to get us started on questions? Are there any questions? Uh, trustee Reckler.
Okay, thank you very much for the, for the presentation. Of all the programs in the LCAP, how many met their goal? How many came close? How many were big misses? And how many do not have the data to determine whether goals were met?
There are several programs um in the LCAP, so I would have to bring that data back to you um regarding each program in the LCAP and if they met their goals.
Okay. Um, i- i- can anybody speak to what the big successes were, what the big misses were in the LCAP? And how you're working to address it in the next one?
I can say that there were um ed services where I was actually reviewing the LCAP and going over all the goals that we made gains in our um reclassification rates. We also made goals in our, in literacy. So we saw major improvements in literacy outcomes for students. Um, so those are two major areas within the LCAP where we saw um improvements for this school year. We're also still collecting data, so when we think about the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, we're still in the assessment cycle. So all of the assessment data is not officially collected yet, which is what I also named at the beginning of the slide deck. So we do have data that's still coming in. And then you also have your SBACK test results. So you're going to have your SBACK test results in August. So you'll have more comprehensive data on if those programs actually were successful for students by looking at your SBACK data that you'll get in August. Uh, students, we're, we're done with testing now, but you'll have your star, your I ready and your SBACK data um to look at as a board um in August.
Thank you. Was there carryover? If so, how much? And what do you intend to?
Thank you for that question. At, at the end of this year, we project it will be no carryover in the current year's LCAP.
How do you intend to incorporate parent feedback into this twenty-three, twenty-four LCAP?
So there was um a meeting, so parent, um, parent recommendations were actually reviewed um by all ed services staff. We actually had several meetings where um Director Blake brought the recommendations forward from all families. Uh, we did review those recommendations. We reviewed our actual budget allocation in the LCAP, uh, which, which was significantly lower than in previous years. So we had to make some modifications um to parent requests. Um, and so we use a tracker where we actually name what we accepted, what we modified or what we declined, which some parents presented because they were on the call um in, in a part of those meetings. Um, so there are recommendations that are included, um, and parents understand those recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
And then if I may, going back to your, your prior question, starting on page, the bottom of page seventy-three, we have the measuring and reporting results section. So I, I haven't tallied by, by action type or, or by uh by program type, but very briefly, uh, you can look at each individual action and see the uh where uh, the district says it has or has not met its objective for each, each scoring, starting at the bottom of page seventy-three in the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Clerk Smith Folds.
Dr. McIntyre, you know how um we have that amount of money for each kid, right? Like a kindergarten generates so much money, a sixth grader generates so much money, a um twelfth grader generates so much money, but don't we also have a formula for how much we spend per student? Do you know what I'm asking? Like, can you tell me those numbers if you have them?
We do, uh, and, and there's actually a lot of different formulas on how we attempt to meet the needs of students. So the, the first thing we do is, is every student is a general ed student first, including special ed students. And so every, we, we attempt to ensure that we meet the equality factor in the budget so that base grant from the LCFF by making sure every school has, we use the staffing matrix for allocating teachers and support staff and, and school-based staff. So we start there by ensuring we, we start with equality. Then we have the, the LCAP, we have our Title I funds, our community school funds, and those are intended to achieve equity. And we allocate those through a couple of different formulas as prescribed in the rules for each funding source. So for example, in the LCAP, uh, about four and a half million dollars is directly allocated to the school sites on a per-student basis. And they decide which services and actions they want to focus on more deeply to meet their student population's needs. The remainder of the LCAP is predominantly um managed centrally, but spent locally. And so what that means, for example, about two-thirds of the LCAP is spent on staffing. And so while the central LCAP may be paying for staffing, that staffing, staffing mostly resides at the school sites uh in the, so in the form of lower class sizes. The goal is, of course, to provide students that greater, you know, one-to-one interaction with their teacher so they, so that teacher and that student could move along further during, you know, each academic year. Um, so, so there's central allocations and there's site-based allocations. We have unrestricted general fund allocations. And for our Title I schools, we have, uh, we have a matrix that determines how much the Title I schools get based on their population. So if I have a very high proportion, uh, for example, uh, free and reduced meal students at a Title I school, they're going to get more per student than, than a low proportion Title I school like that's forty percent, for example, free and reduced lunch. Um, we do try to spell all this out in the staffing matrix and in the funding matrix in the budget. Uh, it's not really spelled out well here. Uh, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. And then my second question is, with the new LCAP coming, new goals are going to be set, who soon, uh, if I've heard the presentation. Um, who sets those new goals? So we, right now, we have five, right? I heard that we added, we had three, but then we added two more, I believe, Ms. Huffman. So that makes five. When we start a new LCAP cycle, who does that work? Like, who's saying we keep three or we make different or we add six? Who does that work?
Um, that will come from the direction of the superintendent and the board um in partnership with parents and community.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, President Gonzalez, I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Um, okay, I am now closing the hearing. Um, thank you, staff, for your presentation. Board, we're now going to move to comments. And we're doing uh three minutes comments. Um, sorry, for the last one, I forgot to ask for the timer. Uh, trustee Reckler, would you like to get us started? Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you very much. So I've made the same comments three years in a row. This is year three. That it is my belief that you're doing yourselves a disservice with the way that you present this information to the board and the way you present it to the public. And I know you're not used to thinking about it the way I'm used to thinking about it. But I'm going to try once again for next year to try and reset what this presentation looks like so that we can have a robust discussion. And what you do is that you present the data, you give us a multi-hundred-page packet, and then you give us a presentation on how the LCAP is set up. But you never tell us about your successes, how you did, where your shortcomings were, how you made your data, and how that is driving your decision-making. And I see in these documents over and over things that I'm really curious about. And I think that you have an opportunity to really hi- highlight them and talk about the work that you're doing and be frank about where there are shortcomings and what you're doing to sew them up. And three years in a row, we, I have never gotten that. And I've even sent in the presentation of what I think it should look like next year. I want to do the presentation and get some feedback from my board members to see what they think about it. Because I think I have an idea that'll drive robust discussion. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that I was, I was the representative to the, to the DL caps committee this year, and I just want to tell you all that there are a lot of really rough meetings because there wasn't data when people needed it. And so the, the calendar needs to be laid out very carefully when there's going to be data and when they're going to get it and when there's going to be able to be real robust discussion around um, the metrics, because i- i- you know, my gosh, I mean, those meetings were rough. Some people went to those meetings. Their, their parents were not happy. And finally, um, parents made recommendations. I was at the meeting last night. My understanding is that those recommendations were accepted. And to be clear with them about what you can deliver, when you can deliver it, how you can deliver it, and who owns that work. And I think it's really important that people actually get evaluated on owning their piece of the LCAP. I think it needs to be in their yearly evaluations to own very carefully um, and, and be evaluated on it. So, um, you know, I, I, there's a lot of work to do here to sew up the process both from a data, money and collecting parent and student feedback and um um, and, and that's it. And I'm sorry to be a Debbie Downer, but I'm, I'm complete and I'm passionate about this group of parents and the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you. Um. I don't know. I don't think that this presentation is really designed to create robust discussion in here. Um, based on the way our meetings uh run traditionally, better or worse. Um, but I, I think that the idea is for that robust conversation to happen out there. Um, that, that doesn't mean that there's not space for it here. Um, and that it, it shouldn't happen here. Um, but I do really agree around the idea of um ownership. And I get that there is a collective ownership for all of this. But sometimes when you have collective ownership without identifying individuals, the ownership is actually lost in the process, right? It's the collective we uh, but the no right? And that doesn't always um work out. Um, I'm glad that parents were um able to participate in this process. Um, I've said this part before, and I just wanted to say it again tonight, though. I do think that um, at least monetarily, a lot of this was actually decided for the parents actually sat down at the table. Um, I know why that happened. Um, it was because of labor tension that we had in the district, but I don't believe that that would honor the spirit of the LCAP process and, and how it was put in place. So um, I hope that whatever happens, you know, in the future, that time is baked in. Uh, feel parents to be involved on the front end, not on the back. Um, because I feel like what happened in this instance is um, we did something. You know, like they say about the kids, do something and then ask for forgiveness later. And I really think that's what we did to the parents. Um, and I think that's what we did to the students. Um, and I don't think that that's fair. And, and like I said, I don't think it really honors the spirit um, of this law. So, uh, we are here tonight and it is what it is, but I, I hope that we don't have a repeat. Um, and then I do hope that we have authentic, robust conversation, but that has to be on the front end, not after the fact.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Clerk Smith Folds?
Uh, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the presentation. Um. I think the LCAP is extremely important because it's a, it's a navigation tool. It helps us know where we're going, what we're doing, and it helps us stay focused as a board with those goals. I think everybody, everything that we do should be tied back to one of those goals. I think that now that we're moving into a secondary phase of recreating goals or having new goals, that um, Dr. Hurst, this is your time to really put your stamp on it, like this is how we're going to move forward. This is going to be the WCC USD way in handling the LCAP and, and ensuring that you're, you know, taking in feedback from the board, but you're also saying this is the foundational way that I think that we can move the district forward and change some climate and culture. For my um opinion, I would like to make sure that we always include our African American students and our EL students in our LCAP goals. For my, um, opinion, I would like to make sure that we always include our African American students and our EL students in our LCAP goals. I think that we have, um, fantastic parent advisory groups. I think that we need to ensure that their voice is always heard. And we ensure that there's a level of accountability attached to those voices. Um, I think that that's the work that the district is working towards and heading in that direction. So I want to appreciate that. Um, in the last one minute and thirty two seconds, uh, President Gonzalez, so I just want to remind us to be gentle the way we talk about staff work as a board, because it is a lot of work that's done, even if it's not to the standard that we may say it needs to be right now. We can say that in a gentle way. We can have hard conversations in a gentle way. So I want to honor the work that staff does do and then set a standard of what we as a board want to see done. And I think that both things can be true and both things can be appreciated and valued at the same time. Um, again, thank you staff for the work that you do, and I look forward to us moving forward with the LCAP, including all of the things, incorporating all of the things that the board has said tonight. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Uh, for my comments, uh, first I want to give kudos to the staff. Um, I know that this was a different year when creating the LCAP. Um, I agree there was labor tension, right? And we almost went on a strike, right? We had to refocus how we are funding our, our LCFF, and we had to refocus how we do our budget very quickly. Um, so a lot of things fell through the crack when it came to communication with committees and stuff like that, because we were dealing twenty four seven with the larger issue, right? Um, and I do think that I heard from the parent groups tonight that there was quite a bit incorporation of their feedback. Um, I heard a lot of kudos from them on, on certain pieces, right? Not a hundred percent, but obviously we're not going to get a hundred percent yet. Um, so, so I think that the challenge next year is how to push through and forward with SSCs. Um, so my, my, my feedback would be, um, I do think that there's a lot of work to be done there. Um, I did get a lot of complaints this year from SSCs that they weren't really involved in decision making at certain sites right now. Some have a great model. Right? So I don't want to speak in generalization. Uh, but some, you know, have had a hard time recruiting for ELAX and APACs, right? So we have to figure out how to do that um, in a different way. I know it's hard when we're dealing with budget issues, right? I mean, that's just a reality, right? Because we're having to cut a lot of programs that might help us re-recruiting of families, right? So, so we got to think differently. So that's, that's my, that's my feedback, but I do want to thank you all for, for the work. So I know it's not easy in the middle of what we're dealing. Um, okay, board, thank you so much. That was a discussion item. Um, so now we're going to move to our last item, but before we do, um, we have the budget, the presentation will take about thirty minutes. I'm assuming between questions and comments, uh, we're looking at twenty minutes. Uh, and then we have C five, which was contracts that was pulled. Uh, and it's nine fifty. So I am going to ask us, I'm going to make a motion to extend the meeting until we are done with C five. Um, wherever that is, oh, I'm sorry, by eleven thirty, I mean extended by eleven thirty. If we're done by ten forty five, yay. Uh, we all get a lollipop. If not, we have till eleven thirty, uh, to have these discussions. Um, so I'm going to make the motion that we extend until eleven thirty.
I'm sorry, I have a point of order, please. Sure. I think I heard that there was also going to be a motion to reconsider.
Unfortunately, um, the only person that can reconsider the item, um, was, it was supposed to be in the prevailing side. And Clerk Smith Folds, uh, does not want to bring it back.
Okay, got it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. I should have let you know. Um, so it's just those two items. So once we're done with C five, that's when, my motion is that we end the meeting at that point.
Smith Folds, second.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to about, uh, Trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Barron.
Baron, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, passed unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Dr. McIntyre, I pass it to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to be here before you this evening. Uh, let me just pull up the presentation. Tonight, I'm, I'm excited to be before you to present the twenty three, twenty four proposed budget. Uh, as always, the first thing I need to do is thank my team tonight. I'm a proud Papa. I, I've had the, the privilege of leading a team of extraordinarily people, people for the last eighteen months. Uh, and, and what you see before you in the package that's been developed this year what is definitely the fruit of a lot of people's labor. And I want to point out some of the leaders, uh, that, that guided their teams to do that. Executive Director Sungjae Cha, our fiscal lead in the district, uh, has done a tremendous job in pulling us together and keeping us on track. Uh, our, our director of state and federal programs, Lynn Potter, and coordinator Andrea Arnold were critical in, in making sure that we met the needs of our sites and our programmatic needs and stayed legal. Uh, our coordinators, Jeff Carter and Position Control and Margarita Romo, uh, also supported, uh, very, very heavily. And, and I have to say, the, 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 the hub of the Wheel of Business Services, uh, Senior Administrator Assistant Veronica Vega was just absolutely instrumental in bringing this to life. Uh, what you see before you tonight, and I think when you see the final book that will publish on the district webpage with all the school site updates, I think it'll be a product that you'll be very proud of and, and darn near meeting the standard for the Association of School Business Meritorious Budget Award. So we're working that direction. Hopefully over time, the district will make that. Uh, at the conclusion of my presentation tonight, uh, our fiscal advisor and, and my thought partner, Javeta Cleveland, will also have a couple of words to share. So I will try to be direct and succinct as we get through this, uh, and, and, and hopefully be able to answer your questions. So the budget process is a year long process. We, we, you've seen a version of this chart several times. Uh, as you know, we have to adopt our budget before the first, before July first, when we start our new fiscal year, because we're on a July first to June thirtieth fiscal year. Uh, and we're taking inputs all the way from, from January, uh, through, through May, before we gather that information and use the assumptions and the governors may revision for the development of our budget. And the reason we have to do that is because the legislature and the governor haven't worked out all their final agreements. And the governor hasn't signed his budget. That doesn't typically happen, uh, until June twenty seventh, if everything goes as it's supposed to. And so we're having to use those may revision assumptions. To the extent that, that there are material differences between what's presented here and the budget that is actually signed into, into law uh, at the end of June, then staff will bring back what we call the forty five day revision by the middle of August. So one of the things I think it's important to share is, is in California, school districts rely heavily on, on the state for funding. In fact, ninety percent of the school districts in the state of California receive a substantial portion of their operating funding from the state of California. Uh, one, once, once they've received their property taxes, the rest of the need is made up by the state. And so as the state economy goes, so does public education in the state of California. And we'll talk about some of, some of the, the drivers of that in future slides. So I'm going to start by giving just kind of an economics update of, of what's feeding into this budget as we developed it. Uh, in the May revision, the governor shared that the state revenues were down substantially, uh, driving down projected revenues by thirty one and a half billion dollars. Uh, a little, you can see a little table there talking about where personal income, sales, news tax and corporate taxes have changed year over year, how the numbers came in below forecasts in January. And the fact that we're sitting in a position where we have more economic risks than we typically do year to year. When I think, you know, COVID was awful. You know, we turned off the spigot and then we turned it back on and it went from nothing to amazing pretty quick, uh, all things considered. Um, but in this case, we've got, we've got some factors that we really want to dig into and understand, because if we see, you know, we worry about things like contagion or cascading effects that could then result in changes in personals, people in personal income in the state of California. We're also going to talk a little bit about the revenues that, that impact education and the, uh, the reserves that are set aside for public education and, and why that's so important. Finally, you, you see on the bottom right of the slide, the COLAs, cost of living adjustments that are included in the assumptions, and we'll show you how those assumptions feed into multi-year presentation, multi-year budget, uh, projections in just a minute. But once again, massive cost of living adjustment for next year, eight point two two percent. And, you know, remember the Fed's goal for inflation for us is two percent year over year. And so where we see that inflation going higher, we also see interest rates going higher. So the governor's may revision included a lot of very useful pieces of information as we look forward. Um, some of that information just leads us to get a little nervous about volatility. Uh, and, and whether or not we have, we have enough, uh, flexibility within our current system, both locally and at the state level to absorb any major shocks. Uh, so the governor really attempted in, in the May revision to, to kind of strike a balance by protecting the investment in the LCFF. So being able to fully fund that COLA of eight point two two percent, and he did so by, by short funding, uh, prior commitments and one-time funding resources. So we look, uh, that was essentially how they tried to make up the difference of that thirty one billion dollars. Also, uh, recognizing there's a bit of uncertainty as education falls into a category of investments to protect. But even within education, the trade-offs had to be made. So the, the protection local control funding formula was great. But one-time funding resources that we had already counted on the revenue for, like the, uh, emergency learning loss block grants and the, uh, arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant were both cut down substantially. And these were revenues that we were counting on in our multi-year cash plan. It was interesting that the governor echoed his, his, his warning in May, uh, basically repeated his January warning, saying that, you know, really his plan does not incorporate a lot of the broader economic risks that, that could be out there. And we're going to show you a slide of what that may look like. And the reason I point that out is because the Legislative Analyst Office, they're, they're, they're like the economists for the legislature. They're not really directed by any one legislature or a party like the Department of Finance is. And so I, I, you know, I tend to lean a little more heavily on what the LAO says about the, about their economic projections. And when they say we might be overstating revenues at the state level, that makes me nervous. And then the governor's almost acknowledging this in his statement. Next, uh, the governor pointed out that we have a progressive tax system. That means the more you make, the more tax you pay. Um, a typical family of four who's living on a sixty thousand dollar income typically gets most of their state taxes that they pay in back at the end of the year. But that top one percent pays fifty percent of the state personal income tax in the state of California. And, and so when, when we see things like, for example, the decline in the stock market, a lot of wealthy people have their money in the market, for example. So if that goes down, think about that capital gains for personal income tax going down with it. Uh, addition, we, we already talked about the, the degradation of revenues going from, from a projected twenty two and a half billion dollar reduction in January to thirty one and a half billion in May. Uh, and, and also one of the big outliers that's, that really makes us unsure of where we're truly going to land from a revenue perspective. It is due to, due to, uh, economic conditions, the state has allowed taxpayers to file their personal tax return until October. We normally have to file in April. And so the state would normally have expected forty two billion dollars in revenue in April. And now we're waiting for October and we don't know forty two billion dollars is going to show up. Uh, so, so very big news. Some of the other risks we're seeing, interest rate hikes, persistent inflation, keep in mind, eight of the last nine recessions, when the Fed has raised interest rates to slow inflation, they have caused stagnation in the economy. And, and so, you know, we want to see them achieve that, that two percent GDP or inflation rate uh, that, that, that they shoot for, but we don't want to see a stagnated economy at the same time. Some of the other things we're also looking at is what's happening with the banks. We've seen four banks fail, three in the month of March and one in, in May, uh, in, in, in the last couple of months. So big, big risks there. We, you know, we saw contagion for different reasons, uh, around the housing market back in two thousand eight. I'm not saying we're set up to see anything like that today, but when banks fail, that's, that's pretty scary. And we have to look at the underlying factors. This is mostly interest rate driven in this case. Some of the good news is the May revision COLA of eight point two two percent is being applied to all programs. It's being applied to special education, to, to food service, to the mandated block grants, to preschool, to our charter programs. Um, so, so great news that, that we're not seeing this different rates like we've seen in years past. Uh, so that means, you know, the staff across our programs will, will, will be receiving the, or the the program leads will be receiving the change in funding. They need to keep maintaining the level of program they offered last year, at least due to inflation. The governor did point out in the may revise, some of the risks that really contribute to uncertainty in the future economy. Uh, he, he used the term, the economy is balancing on the head of a pin. Those are the kind of terms that they're probably designed to make people like me really nervous and, and, you know, mission accomplished. Uh, I try not to be the sky is falling CB now. Um, but in this case, there are a lot of things out there that make me a little bit nervous. Uh, you know, we've seen slight increases in unemployment. Hopefully we'll see those level out. You know, we're, we're definitely in bear market territory right now. The Fed continues to rate interest, raise interest rates. And, and, uh, so, but on the plus side, supply chains are easy. We're actually able to get most of the products we wanted to get in the past. We're not paying fifteen hundred dollars a linear foot for wood, uh, like we were just a year and a half ago. So, so pluses and minuses. When we look at the, the future economic growth, the blue line is the revenue projection by the Department of Finance. So you have the historical from nineteen eighty, eighty one, going through current, where you see that dat, that dashed vertical line. To the right of that vertical line, the blue is what's in the Department of Finance, Proposition Ninety Eight Revenue Projections. The red line represents what the Legislative Analyst Office called a moderate recession. None of that moderate recession is in the governor's plan. So as we look forward, we have to recognize not only risk to the state economy, but risks that are in our own budget. And these are conversations we have had every single time we've talked about finance. We're a district in declining enrollment. This is a very hard thing to manage, especially a district our size and the decline we've experienced in the last three years with, uh, post COVID has been very, very difficult to manage. We are taking advantage of ADA average daily attendance loss protection that was provided both last year and the year before. So we've got two tools in the ADA loss protection that are helping keep our revenue, what I would call artificially high in the current year, that will phase out over time. Uh, we, we continue to experience compensation cost pressures. I, I, I hope people feel like they've been honored. Uh, that, that they were honored in, in what was negotiated, but at the same time, the minute we seal the deal, the cost of milk will go up tomorrow, right? And rent also. And so we know that people are continuing to experience those cost pressures. And then we're coming to the end of life on our COVID funds. The S R three federal funding, we will be spending the last of those dollars next year. There are also other one-time funding sources that we will be spending either next year or next year and the following year as part of our fiscal solvency plan and trying to stretch out our solvency over multiple years. So one-time funds represent a real risk to us as a district. So the district's adopted budget is the financial summary of all known factors and plans through the end of May twenty twenty three for the twenty three, twenty four school year through the twenty five, twenty six school year. We don't have a crystal ball. We do have to make some assumptions. Uh, we do include the assumptions, uh, both in this presentation and in the budget book. Um, but I, I just hope, want people to understand that staffing and programmatic plans drive our expenditure plan. Uh, nothing else. So there, there, there are no reductions, uh, to pay for salary. Well, all the reductions to pay for salary increases that we've talked about previously, like in the LCAP and in other areas of the budget are included here. As is a fiscal solvency plan to address the depletion of one-time funding sources that have been used to, to sustain staffing levels above the staffing ratios, those smaller classes. So I had originally called this slide, the real real. This, this is where we are if we do not implement our fiscal solvency plan, which is currently part of the budget as published. Now I have to admit, I, I got a lot of pushback from our fiscal advisor in the county, because this is what they wanted our, our adopted budget to actually look like. Um, but our adopted budget does include a fiscal solvency plan, but I want to show it to you both ways, because I want to be very, very clear. If we don't take the steps in the fiscal solvency plan, this, this is our reality. And so when we look, for example, at our revenues and expenditures over the three, the multi-year projection, the current year plus two years, this is the period the county has, has to provide oversight for. We see that next year, we would be deficit spending in the general fund, both restricted and unrestricted by thirty nine million dollars. That in itself is not tragic, because we know we have one-time federal funds that we're spending down. So for expanding restricted dollars only, we're okay with that, right? Because that's what they were intended for. We know we received the money a year or two years ago, and we're going to spend it over multiple years. So in those out years, we're going to deficit spend. Um, and you see that in, in twenty three, twenty four, we have a pretty good beginning and ending fund balance. Uh, but when you separate out the restricted from the, uh, reserve for economic uncertainty and the, uh, assigned for declining enrollment numbers, those numbers are, are much, much smaller. So a big portion of that fund balance is in the restricted side of the budget. I'm going to break down and show you how we meet the county's requirement on the unrestricted general fund side of the budget that we are operationally neutral. Um, next year in itself isn't, isn't where the, where the sky is falling. It's really in the out years, because absent making the cut this, in twenty three, twenty four, four, twenty five, twenty six, we require a massive infusion from Fund Seventeen to, to remain fiscally solvent. And so we'd have to bring in fifteen million dollars in that year to, to make sure that we could meet our reserve for economic uncertainty. And so we'd have to bring in fifteen million dollars in that year to to make sure that we could meet our reserve for economic uncertainty in year two. In year three, we would have to bring in the remaining balance of Fund thirty five, twenty million dollars that would exhaust Fund seventeen. And we would still be short for our reserve for economic uncertainty by thirteen point nine million dollars. So all that to say, there is a fiscal solvency plan in place. It is provided in pretty good detail in in the in the executive summary. It's essential that the district meet the numbers in the fiscal solvency plan uh in order to maintain. You know, the Fund seventeen, Fund seventeen provides the board time in case the economy also softens. Okay, so that that's the scary reality if we don't do all the things we have to do in the fiscal solvency plan. But I believe you will. And so I'm going to pro- try to provide that pathway forward. When we look at the budget assumptions, one of the ma- the major drivers we have to look at our enrollment. We're not funded on enrollment, but we have to provide a teacher in a seat for every student who comes to our classes, right? And so so our operation is really based on enrollment, but we're funded on average daily attendance, the the proportion of the year in which students are in their seat. What we've seen statewide is that number has fallen massively. Uh we were, we were between ninety three and a half and ninety five percent and a half. And the state was closer ninety five and after ninety six on average, year to year for average daily attendance statewide, that numbers come down to about ninety one. And we're on par statewide, uh and we're using that number for twenty three twenty four, but. We've heard the board talk about, you know, having plans for child welfare and attendance for going out and knocking on those doors. So we know. There's going to be some energy spent on that. We believe that we can bring our number up. I the state number, I believe, is also going to be coming up in future years. This is one of the things that I I have to say the county in FICB doesn't like. They get real leery about out year increases in ADA percentages or enrollment. Um but I I believe what we have here in the out years for increases are reasonable and attainable numbers. Uh if we're focusing on getting those students in their seat each day was what, which is is what we need to do uh to increase student achievement. The other numbers you see are the unduplicated pupil percentage. Those are those proportion of students who are free and reduce meals. English language learners or foster youth only counted one time if they're in all three groups. Um that population is relatively stable here. That popu- that number, though, is highly contingent on the amount of effort that our school sites, for example, our scouts, our school site secretaries, our principals. Those administrative staffs are spending and getting those educational benefit forms filled out and turned in. Uh and and so we had a great result this year as a result of all the energy and effort put in, and hopefully that will continue moving forward. Below that, you see the cola that the Department of Finance is projecting for this year and the next two years. You also see the stirs and purrs rates, the step and column rates for class certified and classified. These are constant, these are inflators in our system that are out of our control. But we have, so we have, they have to be baked in and they are. So one of the the things that you heard me talk about is declining enrollment. It's it's not only affecting the state, it's affecting us. There's only two counties in the out of fifty eight in the state that are projecting growth in enrollment between now and twenty thirty one. So the vast majority of school districts and almost all of the bigs like us in the state are definitely going to continue to see significant declining enrollment. Uh in the tune of about eight percent over twelve years. Uh so, you know, if we're if we're better than a percent per year, or I I should say less than a percent per year, we're probably doing pretty good work in in student retention. Uh but we all know we need to give students and families a reason to be here so we can start attracting in some of our neighbor students. We are assuming a pretty steady decline, not at the rate we saw after covid between twenty one, twenty twenty one and twenty one twenty two. We don't expect a drop like that. We're expecting relatively slow decline. And that that was what we showed you in the enrollment number on the prior slide. So but we are do project decline in the out years in this model. We also wanted to show that when we build this, when we build the staffing and this went back to Clerk Smith Folds question earlier, how do we allocate our funds? We use the staffing matrix both for the equality, what does everybody get? And we do. So you see those general fund listings, but you also see funding sources like L cap or Title One in there. And that's where we're trying to meet those equity needs. So we we work really hard to try to tell everybody. This is how we staff our schools and we do that with a staffing matrix that's reviewed at many, many different levels. It's not perfect. But it but it does provide a level of predictability. So there's not so much like, why do they get something we don't get? It's very clear on why a school gets something. A person, a service, whatever, whatever that may, a person in this case. Uh so we would did want to show you that we have a staffing matrix uh that we follow pretty tightly. One of the biggest challenges in this district, and this is not the first time I'm showing this particular slide. Uh that that we struggle with is is I just showed you a slide a couple of seconds ago that showed. Our declining enrollment, but when you look at our staff population over time, uh you know, for example, since. Twenty sixteen, um you can see our staffing has has grown a little. And dropped a little and grown a little again. Now you're going to see some growth when you get an influx of one time funds. So, you know, right around covid time. Uh nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one, we saw massive influx of funds. And of course, we would expect to see some increases. Uh to match those in temporary staff to, you know, to handle learning loss, to handle operating during in pandemic conditions and things like that. Um but as our student population continues to to dwindle, we, one of the challenges we have is matching our adult population to our student population. And if there's one thing I've learned working statewide in public education is. When it comes to staff, you can have a lot of staff and pay okay. Or you can have few staff and pay really, really well. Both ways, there are models that can that provide for really good student achievement. But you can't have a lot of adults and pay well. There's just not enough funding per 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 student to accommodate that. And so what you're seeing is we've lost a lot of students. And despite the fact you've seen funding going up, it without pairing down the staff uh to match the student population, we end up. Spending more than we can afford to. And that that has been a lingering problem in West Contra Costa. And so that what we attempt to show you here is is the breakdown of certificated staff, classified staff and management. Management has both certificate and classified in it and management has actually four different groups. And so in the in the executive summary, we do try to provide a breakdown over time of each of those four groups. So you can see where the changes have occurred, uh because I know we've had a lot of conversations over the makeup of the management group in general. Uh and of course, it's provided here in the next slide. Uh sorry, I couldn't remember if it was only in the executive summary or in this slide as well. So here you see uh. One of the conversations we had is what what did our management staffing look like at at its all time low? And for that period that you saw on the previous slide, that was twenty twenty one uh versus uh what we had over the last three years. So twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three. And what we project for next year. And so you can see, for example, that. Ten management group, those are the unrepresented managers. So those are people like me or directors uh who don't belong to a bargaining unit. The superintendent, for example, is in that in in that unit. Um we have the unit eleven W C C A. These are our site leaders, our principals, our A Ps, some central office coordinator level type positions as well. Um and you can see the changes over time there. We have confidential, we have five confidential uh staffs. Who support the district's bargaining posi- position. That's why they're confidential. That is actually the definition of confidential. It's not privacy like HIPAA. Um and then finally, we have S S A School Supervisor Association, uh and and these are classified uh management leaders. And and so you can see how this, how the populations within these groups have changed over time. And I did try to provide a bit of analysis. In the executive summary to to talk through some of these things. But I know this has been a conversation that we have had collectively four or five times since I've been here. So I hope this is useful uh to you. As we, as we look at how we're funded, how we conduct our operations, you've heard us talk about the local control funding formula. We look at the impact of that eight point two two percent cola here and and actually Clerk Clerk Smith Folds mentioned this, we get funded by grade spans. And so you can see here that kindergarten, the third grade grade span, the four to sixth grade span, the seven to eight grade span and the nine to twelve grade span. You can see the prior year base grant numbers, the value to each one of those grade spans for the cola. So that gives us a new. Base grant for for next year for twenty three twenty four. Now we know kindergarten, the third grade, we 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 attempt to have smaller class sizes. So the state says if you meet the class, if you come in under the class size maximums. For those grade spans, meaning no more than about twenty four students per teacher on average by school site. Then we give you an extra ten point four percent for the for that grade span group. And then nine to twelve to account for C T E, the state gives us two point six percent increase there. And so when you add those grade span adjustments, you get the adjusted gr- uh base grants that every student generates if they show up in that grade span for the entire year. So if they show up for ninety percent of the year, then they're going to get ninety percent of that. They're going to generate ninety percent of those dollars. Also, because we're expanding transition kindergarten, the state recognizes because they have the smaller class sizes for transition kindergarten. They say you need a teacher, of course. But you can only have twelve students per adult in the class. And so the state is saying. We don't necessarily expect you or demand you to put a second teacher in that classroom if you're going to have, say, twenty four students. But you're going to need a second adult. And so there's supplemental funding to try to help pay for that second adult in that smaller classroom. And the state has ambitions of getting us down to twenty students or ten students per adult. And so I anticipate this number will grow over time. So when you do the math with our student population and the local control funding formula. You see that the local control funding formula entitlement before adjustments is three hundred forty four point three million dollars. However, within that, sixty two point seven million dollars has to be used in the L cap. That was what we just spent. The prior hour talking about was it was where that money comes from, what we use it for and how we're trying to use it to meet the equity needs for our students. So you can see the components that make up the LCFF. You got the base grant, the grade span adjustments, supplemental concentration grants. You've also got some old add ons that were part of the formula when they got, when the state. Got rid of all these restricted programs. Uh for me, the more exciting one is the home to school one, because for the first time in history, that one's actually starting to see cola adjustments. And they're and they're funding up to sixty percent of what we're spending on homeschool transportation. Uh good news for us here at West Contra Costa. One of the areas that we that we are not alone in looking at uh is 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 our experience in our cost inflation in special education. And and I did want to share this a couple of different ways, and this is not an indictment. I I I I hope if you if you never hear one thing from me, it's it it's that um. Is is an indictment on special ed on our team. And the reason I say that is because the state and federal governments have set up our special ed program and never fully funded it. So the feds have never funded their forty percent promise to special education students. And the state, while they've increased their investment in special education, doesn't come close to meeting its share. And so what you see in this chart. Uh with the blue is the state contribution to meeting special education costs statewide. Uh the orange is the federal contribution. So when we look at twenty one, twenty two. Uh the state only can, or the feds only contributed about eight point five five percent of the special ed costs to actually meet the needs of special ed students. While the state contributed about twenty six percent. So that remaining sixty five and a half percent. We have to take from the unrestricted general fund and transfer it over to the restricted side to pay for the 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 needs. And services to provide for our special ed students who are general ed students first. So they also get general ed based dollars. And then we also have to make this separate transfer. And the reason I show this is because we are fighting a system where we're being squeezed at at every at every every side. And that's important to recognize because it's not a mismanagement. It's not a government governance problem. It 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 is a bit of a systems problem, but it's a systems problem that when you dig in pretty deeply, you can you can begin to see what's really happening here in this chart. You see the 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 Fed, uh the state and the local contribution to special education. And you see the total cost line up above. You see a little blip right during covid where it went down, but you see the slope of the line is roughly the same. You also see the slope of the district's contribution to the unrestricted general fund about the same. The one thing I wanted to put on here, but the slide got too busy, is if I threw the inflation or the cola line on here, it would match almost the same slope. And so you've seen an an increase in the cost of special ed that mirrors inflation pretty closely. And so what does that mean? It means we look at all the normal drivers. Can we provide services more cheaply? What services should we in source versing outsourcing? Um and and what are the, what are the impacts on the choices made here? Because. To the extent we we have to meet all the needs of the I A P of every child with an individualized education plan. Uh but if we have the opportunity to to meet their need two different ways, we do get to choose the cheaper of the two ways. Um so but I am showing that essentially the cost of special education is growing substantially over time. Uh and it's something that we definitely should be. Focusing on because when you look, we're going to be spent, we're projecting to spend about a hundred million dollars on special education in the coming year. Or we're going to pass that hundred billion dollar threshold. That makes it our second biggest program. In front of the LCFF, in front of Title One. So it it's definitely worth digging into, spending some time on. I I believe our team is doing a brilliant job. But definitely worth digging into deeply uh and supporting the team around uh the work they're doing there. So now we're going to take a step back because we were provided requirements and direction by the County Office of Education. One of those requirement, well, we two, we had two requirements. One was. Uh a requirement for third interim that we had to show the cuts we didn't make at March fifteenth, how we were going to uh go take care of those. We did that at third interim. Uh at at the uh middle of May. Tonight, we have to show that the unrestricted general fund will be at least operationally neutral or positive. For twenty three twenty four. Fortunately, that wasn't a requirement for all three years because we couldn't have got there mathematically, but we were able to get there. Uh through the cuts that were made by staff and the team, the contract committee, uh and a lot of cuts that took place before the contract committee. Um a- as well as moving things that we could cut positions and expenditures that we were unable to cut into one time restricted funding. Which is a very short term solution, but we were able to meet the requirements of of the county by doing so. I know you've heard me say many times, this is not, we don't want to put people in one time funding sources. We were without options for this year because we didn't go as. We didn't get as far as we needed to on the personnel cuts this year to really. Avoid putting people into one time funding sources. And and I know that statement has a thousand different connotations. And I mean it completely respectfully. Uh I'm talking purely just from a dollars and cents perspective, not from a student achievement perspective. Um and and really about meeting our obligations to the county oversight in that regard. Um so here, what you see is the multi year projection, the M Y P for twenty three, twenty four through twenty five, twenty six. You see the projected revenue using all those assumptions that we talked about previously for for uh cost of living adjustments. Uh you see the growth and the contr- expected contribution to both special education and routine restricted maintenance. Uh and and what's left to cover the general ed unrestricted general fund program. And so you see, when we look at expenses minus revenues after contribution. The twenty three, twenty four school year is is effectively neutral, with positive twelve hundred and eighty two dollars. That is budget dust. It's it's zero. Um and we do so without uh touching Fund seventeen. When we look in the in the future years, we see we're operationally negative both in the uh in twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six, roughly four point six million and four point three million dollars. Um that assumption is that the board will implement the fiscal solvency plan. And I am going to show you the fiscal solvency plan because it is aggressive. Aggressive. When we look at the entire general fund, not just the unrestricted general fund, we see that the combined revenue for next year is is projected at uh four hundred eighty two point two million dollars. And our expenditures are projected back to that five hundred twenty one million. This is going back to Fund that that slide thirteen. In the deck where I showed you the Scott, you know, the real real. This is year one of the real real. So we're we're projected that we're deficit spending about thirty nine point two million dollars, which is right there in the second column for twenty three, twenty four. And that's where we have that breakdown that we saw. We saw fun balance starting at a hundred and eight point eight million dollars and going down to sixty nine point six million. But forty four and a half million dollars that is restricted funds. So we have to set aside three percent reserve for economic uncertainty, that fifteen point six million. And we're left with nine point one million dollars above. And thank goodness, because we're going to need that the following year. When we look at the same metrics for the following year, four hundred and sixty three point nine million dollars in revenue. Four hundred ninety five point two million dollars in expenses. So we're deficit spending thirty two point three million dollars. That's after you make the cuts. After after you make the cuts in the fiscal solvency plan. So with that, you see the fund balance going down, the restricted fund balance is is being spent down. We're down, go from forty four and a half million down to seventeen point seven million. We meet our reserve for economic uncertainty plus five million dollars. We retain all the money in Fund seventeen. Twenty five, twenty six, we're deficit spending twenty one point seven million. The fiscal solvency plan has cuts in twenty three for four twenty four, four twenty four, twenty five, and in twenty twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, four twenty five, twenty six. I'm going to show you how much those are on the next slide, but essentially you see we we're burned down all of the fund balance and and we're just left with the bare minimum. Both in the restricted, unrestricted, but we retain all the Fund seventeen. When we look at the breakdown of the fund balance of the of these, kind of think of them as one time funding sources for the most part. Uh that are available. Uh this is where we 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 project that our one time funding sources are going to end the twenty three, twenty four school year. So these are the funding sources that would restricted funding sources that would carry over into twenty four, twenty five. And the reason we show you these is because we want you to know. And the reason we show you these is because we want you to know to the extent. That we could preserve positions, we could preserve programs by, by moving expenses out in, you know, carrying these funds out multiple years. We do attempt to do so. So it's not attempting to just slash and burn. We're trying to drag this out as long as we can and meet, meeting the county requirements. And trying to sustain programs. Here is where we have the fiscal solvency plan. You can see in year. One. I need to figure out how to hide this. There we go. Okay, so in, in twenty-three, twenty-four. We assume you're gonna make the cuts that affect twenty-four, twenty-five. And so what we're looking at is, uh, uh. FTE reduction with a dollar amount or cost of fifteen point one million dollars, so fifteen point one million dollars in salaries. Need to be cut in twenty-three, twenty-four for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Plus another four point six million dollars in non-labor related expenditures. Uh, the goal is to achieve seventeen point three million dollars in savings for the twenty-four, twenty-five. And of course, ongoing cuts twenty-five, twenty-six school year. In tw- twenty-four, twenty-five, we are assuming another eight point four million dollars in labor cuts and one million dollar non-salary cuts. Uh, to achieve a seven million dollar, uh, decrease in twenty-five, twenty-six forward. So this is the fiscal solvency plan. We do provide a lot of detail on what areas would, would make the most sense. From, uh, from a kind of an operational perspective, um, but. We've done it in a way that prov- provides the board the opportunity and latitude to make choices. So if you can hit, if you can find your fifteen point one million, three different ways, it allows, you know. By choosing trade-offs and programs and, and groups, you get to do that. Um, I'm not trying to tie your hands anymore than we are kind of already are financially, uh, but these are the numbers we need to make. In order to kind of. Maintain our own or sustain our own destiny, I guess would be the, the best way to put it. Um, and, and so with that in mind, I do show you that even with those cuts. I'm sorry, here you see the, the blue line is a reserve for economic uncertainty. That's what the state requires us to have in the unrestricted general fund. If we do not implement the, uh, fiscal solvency plan as shown on the previous slide. Then you can see what happens to the total reserves available for solvency. Essentially. We hit the bare minimum in twenty-four, twenty-five, and we are in receivership in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and, and. You know, I, I. I know there's a. A lot of passion around these hard trade-offs, and, and I, I do want to say. Um, we do not want to put ourselves in a position where we think marching on Sacramento is going to get us out of this problem. It's not. And if the economy softens, we'll be marching toward this problem a lot, lot faster. And so preserving Fund Seventeen and making those cuts along the way is essential. To what's realistically like, likely to happen economically in public, public education. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I believe Mr. Jeveta Cleveland, uh, had some words to share as part of my final close-up.
Okay. Good evening, um. Board President Gonzalez Hoy, um, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, and Staff and Community. I'm here again, um, always in an encouraging way. Um, the Contra Costa County Office of Education recently issued two letters to the district. Um, both the lack of going concern letter dated May twelfth, um, twenty-twenty-three, and the second interim letter. Dated May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. They state that among other actions, the district is required to prepare budget revisions. Sufficient to maintain the fiscal solvency of the district. And these revisions are to be incorporated in the district's twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Uh, Dr. McIntyre already provided a very detailed presentation, so I'm not gonna go into too many comments. Dr. McIntyre's, um, presented the budget that incorporates significant budget reductions over the subsequent two fiscal years. He's also presented what the budget looks like if those reductions aren't made, and I asked him to present that slide because sometimes it's hard to see. What really would happen if budget reductions aren't made. The, uh, slide number thirteen, I, I would suggest that. You really get a chance to understand that. If you didn't understand it tonight, that you spent some time to get an understanding of slide number thirteen. It clearly shows that the district, uh, will face insolvency. Um, and that the district reserves would be depleted if budget reductions aren't made. I would like to continue to encourage the district. I've seen districts get out of this situation, so that's why I am the fiscal advisor. I've been a part of state takeover teams. So I want to continue to encourage it, encourage the board, um, to, um. Implement the physical fiscal solvency plan that's incorporated in the proposed budget that, um, Dr. McIntyre just shared. Um, these are significant budget reductions, but it's very crucial to ensure the district stays solvent. The sooner that these reductions are made, the greater the impact. Ongoing reductions, when they're made early, really do prevent. The district from going off a bigger cliff down the road, making even deeper reductions. Um, holding off on making these, uh, reductions will actually compound the deficit. Um, if the can is kicked down the road, it just, the road just gets more challenging. Um, like I said, I, I do have a belief, I'm a part, I would, I grew up in this community. I have belief. This is really, you know, kind of disheartening to me to see, um, the district facing, uh, insolvency. So that's why I'm committed to, uh, continuing to support this district and try to get us there, um, as a team. And so, um, I have reviewed the budget. I have, uh, reviewed the assumptions. And I know it will be presented back to you for, for, uh, approval at a subsequent board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so, so much, Dr. Cleveland and Dr. McIntyre, um, for your very detailed presentation. Um, we have to open the hearing. So I am now opening the hearing. Uh, staff, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Mr. Jeffrey Bean, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for taking time to hear me. I am. Good.
One moment. I'm, I'm sorry, we are doing one minute on comments. Thank you. Sorry about that. You can restart.
Thank you. Um, I am Jeffrey Bean. I teach, uh, fourth grade and fifth grade at Shannon Elementary. Um, I wanted to ask the board member to request staff to address the impacts of Proposition Twenty-eight on. Funding for music programs. On yesterday evening, I saw an awesome performance at Penole Middle School. Um, their whole music program, guitars, bands, jazz band, choirs. A lot of my former students were performing. It was excellent. Um, and I also heard that their. Music program is being cut next year. They'll only have two beginning band classes, and most of the other things will be gone. So. Uh, that seems not in line with Proposition Twenty-eight, um, which requires, uh, that funds be supplemented. And that the funds be used to, uh, provide more introduction in music, not less. So I hope that will be addressed. Uh, thank you for your hard work. Have a good night.
Next public comment is Yolanda Vera Allen. Please unmute yourself.
Um, good evening, board. A, a lot is, um. Resting on this budget. One of the things that we are hearing time and time again is the declining enrollment. By continuing to cut programs and services to our students, parents will leave. When our students' needs are getting better or addressed, they're gonna go elsewhere to get those needs met. There's always, um, waiting list at our charter schools in the area. They're not facing declining enrollment, but we are. And they will continue to. Enroll, to see enrollment decline when we aren't putting students first. I know that this is a terrible situation that we're in. We've been here before. We've come out of it, but we won't come out of it if we don't put students first. Thank you.
Our last public comment is Sarah Torni. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Um. I, uh, just recently heard about the possibility of cuts at the middle school, and, um, I have an incoming. Student there, who at the Penole Middle School, who actually was also just accepted to the Contra Costa School of Performing Arts in Walnut Creek. And when we hear about the possibility of losing these things at the middle school, just as. The person before me said, it really makes you think, why am I sending my children to these schools when they continue to cut them? And I really hope that you address what's going on with these students and how this really does enrich their lives. It helps with their education. And just do your best to keep these programs in our schools because we don't want to leave this district. And we appreciate everything you guys do, and we know you're gonna make the best choice. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody who made comments. Um, board, we're now gonna move to questions. Um, we're gonna do four questions. Um. Who would like to start on questions? Tracy Phillips?
I have a question.
To me?
To you.
Before the four, go ahead.
Before, is it? Is, are we doing rounds on this one?
No, we're doing four total, uh, because people had a chance to do questions in their one-on-ones.
Okay.
But if you have.
Where they cannot be in a meeting during the workday, but I hear you.
Well, we all have jobs during the day.
All have jobs.
Well, I do, and so does Clark Smith Foles and Trustee Christian, and I think Trustee Reckler all have jobs during the day. Anyways, it's late. I'm just pushing back, but.
I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait and ask later. Hopefully somebody asks my questions and I can get some extras in.
Listen, if you have like a. Question that does not get asked and you really want to, we can always, you can have obviously in that, in the question, but we'll do four and then. If you have one more, then we'll do that. Who would like to go to start in? Go ahead, Tracy Reckler.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, there hasn't been any public mention of Prop Twenty-eight. And how those funds will be. Um, utilized or what the district plans to do with them. Would you please explain what the plan is? And would you also explain what the board's role is in the approval? Or monitoring of Prop Twenty-eight?
Absolutely.
Oh, and I should say that this is the music and arts proposition that was passed. In this past November that provides funding, permanent funding to all schools for arts and music instruction.
Thank you. You're correct. Proposition Twenty-eight provides one percent of the prior year's budget amount for arts and music. Uh, programs in schools, uh, statewide. Uh, in, in what, it's, it's allocated under some certain rules. It's all allocated out to the school sites. None of it is managed centrally. And, and it's allocated out on a per-student basis based on the prior year enrollment at that school site. And eighty percent of, of the allocation each school site must be used on staffing. It can be used on internal staffing. Or hired staffing, like with through an agency or a volunteer, but eighty percent has to be spent on staffing and twenty percent can be spent on staffing or materials. Uh, and it must be supplemental, as, as you heard, uh, from, from one of my favorite math teachers. Uh, in the district and, and, but therein lies a bit, a little bit of a rub because we do have a situation where would you have. Not, not received this funding and stopped a program? Then you do lower your base. And so we're in a situation where we have fewer students, fewer subbing, or fewer, um, dollars. Going to those programs and would we otherwise cut that program? Which is what we're, where we were because absent that funding source. So you have your base and you put Prop Twenty-eight on top of it. But the base can go down based on the. Uh, un- uncertain conditions we, that we do document and do get audited. So it's not just an arbitrary cut. That, that, that there's no accountability for. In fact, this is something that the auditors look at, the whole supplanting issue. So when we do, uh, make a cut based on the underlying conditions, we're allowed to do so. We just have to document it properly. Uh, but the, the ultimate goal, of course, with that funding is, is not to cut underneath it, so the program gets smaller. But we do have to make sure that we've, that we spend within the dollars we get. Other guy, otherwise we end up cannibalizing something. If it's not art, it's gonna be a, you know, core A to G program or somewhere else. Uh, because at the end of the day, we're, we're running out of, we're spending more dollars than we're bringing in. So as much as we want to do more, more, more. We can't anymore. Um, so I, so, so per-student amounts based on prior year. Uh, allocations eighty percent for staffing. I can give you a chart with the exact dollar amounts, and I know Dr. Hui, uh, has been working with the school sites to help them manage what that's gonna look like. Uh, for their programs.
Okay, I think I got more answer than I. Never mind. I'll follow up at another time. Um. Does this budget projection put any money away for a negotiation with WCCAA? That is a sunshine. Um, contract.
Uh, great question. So it, it, when, when we were working on second, third interims last year, we were concluding negotiations. And, and when we came to the board with the AB twelve hundred, uh, when we settled with UTR, there were me-too provisions. In that. And so we assumed, for example, that next year, uh, most of the other units, not teachers, but most of the other units would get a six percent me-too. When we did that, we made that assumption for every unit, including WCCAA. So that was part of the AB twelve hundred disclosure. It has been reviewed by the county. Um, we just need to conclude negotiations with WCCA and hopefully we fall within that.
Okay. And then. How many days does Fund Seventeen fund of operations? I believe before we said it was about three and a half weeks.
I, I would say that's very close because three percent is typically about nine days. So, so that, that's, that's reasonable. Yes.
Okay, and then. How close were you? When you made, when. Since you've been here, what's your track record been on how close you've been to. Your assumptions on attendance, enrollment, UPP, you know, all the levers. The projection levers.
Uh, UPP, we've, we've been very close. Enrollment, our ADA actually is, is, has been, is, is the bigger challenge. We've typically been within a hundred, hundred and fifty students, which is. Not a small sum of money, so I don't want to sound like that's a, a massive achievement. Uh, when we're talking across twenty-five thousand students, that, that feels good, uh, but, but it, it is a substantial sum of money nonetheless.
Okay.
Thank you, Tracy Reckler. Tracy Phillips, do you have questions?
I do, if you don't mind, I'd like to wait still though.
Sure. Sorry, I forgot. Uh, Clerk Smith Folds.
Dr. McIntyre and, uh, Dr. Cleveland, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, would it be accurate to say that? The wage of a stay-at-home parent should earn for the jobs that they do, which is about eighteen jobs. Should they tackle about a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in the year twenty-twenty-two? I got that from insure.com. They said that, and correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, for example, insure.com figures the wage of a mom should earn for the eighteen or so jobs that she must tackle throughout the day. One hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in twenty-twenty-two. Which is nine point two percent higher than the twenty-twenty-one report's finding of one hundred and sixteen thousand, twenty-two dollars. And according to the salary, salary dot com's most recent annual mom's ser- salary survey. Moms should be paid even more at about one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-two. Do you find that to be accurate?
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not laughing at you. I'm, I'm laughing at the complexity of the question because there is. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not laughing at you, I'm, I'm laughing at the complexity of the question, because there are so many factors that feed into that.
I know, wait, get back to me on that, let me.
I, I firmly believe that, that if you broke down the hours and complexity of what we ask parents to do, mothers, stay-at-home parent.
Yes.
Regardless of gender, that absolutely, and, and certainly even if you had to try to pay for it. Especially around the clock care, very, I would say those numbers are probably in, in the realm of reality.
Thank you so much for that, that's my first question, I appreciate that. The second question about our budget, and please correct me if I'm wrong. One of the major things that we need to focus on is attendance and enrollment. Could you please tell me how we are focusing on, as a district, to increase not only attendance but enrollment?
I'd like to share this question with Ms. Huffman, because I think it's a two-part question, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you.
Your question was around, can you repeat the question, Trustee Reckler? I mean, Trustee Smith Folds, sorry.
It's okay, sure. So one of the, and my question starts out with, correct me if we're wrong. But one of the things that we need to concentrate on in this district is attendance and enrollment. So in what ways are we diving deep into attendance and enrollment to increase both of them? To help out with our budgetary, budgetary complexities?
I mean, I, I've spoken on this before a couple times, and so one of the things we did was really try and. I wanna just go back a little bit. I mean, when I first started, there was one person in the truancy office. Which was Barbara Byrd, and so since then, we added the true, two truancy technicians that were vacant. And then we actually put someone over in sort of enrollment, because you have a transfer office, but the transfer office doesn't necessarily manage enrollment, so to speak. And so that's part of what we did, is the system is actually building some staff there to actually support schools. With truancy. So part of what the truancy officers do now, that there's three, they actually go out to school sites. They meet with staff, they talk to them about different ways that they can ensure that they're checking for attendance, calling home. They support with SARS and SARPs for our students. And then obviously, the A two A system, we have a coordinator who was actually supporting with. Looking at the conferences for parents, providing professional development around additional ways we can ensure our students are coming to school. And providing professional development even to our principals around attendance and attendance strategies. In terms of enrollment this year, another thing that we did was we bought banners for all of our schools. To support TK enrollment and just enrollment overall. One of the things Doctor McIntyre mentioned. When he started was, you know, normally we see banners at schools like enroll. So we did purchase those. We also sent out flyers to families on enrollment. And then we also, and I could actually let Ms. Sanders speak a little bit more, because she did meet with. LaShante Smith, who's over enrollment and attendance now. To really do a campaign around enrollment and attendance. So there's been partnerships within the departments to really figure out ways. We can communicate more, get more messaging out to parents, and really our banners, our flyers, so trying to do a lot of those things. That's what we've been really doing to support attendance and just meeting with, we have a session with principals around attendance. And ensuring that, you know, we're taking attendance and we're calling parents when kids are missing. But you know, you have parents, I think, because of COVID. You have many parents who, even if their child just has a cough, they're keeping kids home. And that's been the trend, and so it's really just figuring out how do we support parents and knowing that they can still bring their students to school. Even if they have a small cough.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. Or would you like me to jump in? I can, I cannot, either way. Okay, so in the communications department, we have been working with recruitment and retention to develop. Campaigns in order to support enrollment. And we also did significantly shift our social media strategy during open enrollment. In order to support higher enrollment in our schools. We have identified high priority programs that have more enrollment capacity. And we did build communications campaigns to support that. We did stall at a point of funding some of those campaigns. We were able to get quotes for advertisements on buses. For advertisements on billboards. There is a significant cost to those items. And so that is where those conversations did stall. But certainly in terms of developing the strategy and effectively shifting strategies on all of our owned media. We did employ that as well.
Thank you so much, thank you all three of you. My third question, I believe, is. Doctor McIntyre, have we done a study on who comes to school most, the grade? And why? Do we have any data around that?
Who comes to school most?
So what grade comes to school most, right? Do we have TK show up all the time, or is it a ninth grader that shows up all the time? Like, do we have any data, this aggregated data around who shows up, what grade shows up to school most? And then have we done a dive into why that is?
I, I'm looking back at Ms. Chamberlain, hoping for a, a quick text. Okay. Ms. Logan is currently looking it up.
Clerk Smith Folds, would you like to go to your last question, and then we'll come back to the response on this one?
Sure, thank you so very much. Doctor McIntyre, correct me if I'm wrong, but you talked about how. We need to right-size our staffing matrix. But you also discussed how the. Governor is wanting to have a certain number of students per class. And then, once that happens, then there's, I guess, funding attached to that or what have you. But for example, in TK, they wanted to be twelve to one. Right, right now, we're currently not twelve to one. I would have, the CTA classes that I've visited, we're not. We have. We have a, a teacher and hopefully an aide in the classroom. So how do we rectify the fact that we have to right-size? But we also have to match the class size that the governor is pushing local districts, local education agencies toward.
So certainly on the TK, we, we, we are better than, than the twelve to one cap. So we, we don't have any classes with more than twenty-four, so we would have a teacher and an aide, that would be twelve. Students per adult with a properly credentialed, both teacher and aide in, in the class. At the other levels, we've made some agreements, where for example, the state for kindergarten to third grade. Average, that they give us that ten point four percent increase for smaller class sizes with the goal of being twenty-four to one. Average per school site. So you could have one class with twenty-six, one with twenty-two, because you don't get these perfectly neat packages of students. But across the school site for kindergarten to third grade, if your average is twenty-four or less, then you're eligible for that funding. You also have the ability to negotiate with labor to have a higher number, if labor agrees to it, and they'll still fund it. We, as a district, go in the other direction, and, and we've made an agreement with labor where, where we're below twenty-two to one. We've made that commitment. And, and that's great. There's competing theories on this, respectfully. I mean, if you look at the research, you see a massive. Growth and achievement when you get below sixteen students per, per teacher. But we can't discount the fact that every student above, you know, is also a lot of extra work for those teachers. And you know, they're, they're spreading their time, right? So incrementally, students getting slightly less, so I don't mean to sound disrespectful in saying that we do have an opportunity. Between where we are at twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-four, where there's, there's, the research doesn't show that we would. Hamper student outcomes, but potentially, when I, when I looked at just K to three, it was like seven million dollar difference just between twenty-two to twenty-four. On the class size. Per year.
Thank you so very much, President Gonzalez. So I am complete with the questions, except I'm waiting for that other answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think that they can just jump in whenever they have the answer, okay? Trustee Phillips, do you wanna go? Do you want me to go first? Okay, go ahead.
Doctor McIntyre, you said. During your presentation that the county wanted our budget to look like slide thirteen. Will Miss Cleveland, please elaborate on that statement?
So the, the, the county would have preferred that our financial statement assumed that the financial solvency plan was not acted on. That, that's it, sir.
Right, the question was, will you and Miss Cleveland please elaborate on that statement?
When I was reviewing the budget and I saw that the fiscal solvency plan incorporated the reductions. I wanted to see what the budget looked like without those reductions. However, the county is requesting that the district provide a balanced budget that includes budget revisions. Which, which is what is being presented to the board for approval. So not slide thirteen. Does that make sense?
It makes sense if there's anything else you'd like to say.
Yeah, one is a picture of what, what, what it would look like if the budget reductions doesn't happen. One is a picture assuming that the fiscal recovery or solvency plan would be incorporated and implemented. And that's what's being presented to the county, and that's what the county would approve.
Doctor, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Doctor McIntyre. You said slide twenty-six. Can we bring slide twenty-six up? So it's not an abstract question. Thank you. Doctor McIntyre, you said slide twenty-six is after the cuts are made. That's not the question. If there. Is still massive deficit spending. That leads us to the same place. After the cuts are made. Would you, and Miss Cleveland, and Miss Cleveland, please tell me, what is the point of this?
So does, does the question suppose that we, we should? Cut deeper now to have the sustainable solution in place now? Or, or that we, we shouldn't try to stretch out and meet the county oversight guidance with this, with a minimal year-to-year impact to student program?
I only have four questions. And so I don't wanna ask another question. Answer it, please, however you and Miss Cleveland feel is appropriate. But I'm asking, based on what you said to us, that. That's what it is after the cuts. What is the point of us doing any of this? Because it seems that we're not gonna get anywhere, and regardless of what we do, and I would ask you and Miss Cleveland. To just respond to that. I could be totally wrong, I mean, it's just what I'm seeing, and so I'm asking this question. And I would love to hear from both of you.
I think you referred to slide number twenty-six, which is a combined general fund. So some of that deficit spending is spending down, I believe, one-time dollars for the restricted programs. I would look at slide number twenty-four, which is the unrestricted budget and also incorporates the cuts. Is that correct, Doctor McIntyre?
It does.
And that deficit spending is much further reduced, and that's the unrestricted operating budget.
The reason. So you're right, it's not a perfect solution. The goal is, is to, to meet the, the oversight requirements. Try to minimize the impact on the students and the adults so programmatically, or, or, you know, meeting our commitments when somebody's made. You know, tenure or permanency. So balancing those and providing time for the board to decide, you know, kind of what is most important. As a district, we have tried to be a great many things to, you know, to everybody. But the reality is, we're not funded to be everything to everybody. We're funded to do a few things really, really well. And, and so the goal is to provide. The organization and leadership and governance and all of the stakeholders' time to coalesce around what is, what we truly are. So what that student profile looks like, that graduate profile, what our vision, mission, statement, what our north star is. So we can really narrow our focus around that and align our budget to our true revenues.
Thank you. Doctor McIntyre, Mr. Cleveland, looks like she has something to add.
Nothing to add, I'm just waiting. See if you have an additional question.
Okay. This question. Is. To the superintendent. And anyone else he would like to bring into the conversation. Our goal. Has been to turn this district around. Strategic plan. We don't have staffing being satisfied. Whether that's. Hospital by the cabinet. Or we don't have any money. So how are we gonna pull this off? You want the real answer, sir? It's, it's difficult. I'm not sure if I have the, the answer that you wanna hear, but I will say. One, as far as a strategic plan, that's something that we are currently working on. We actually are partnering with someone right now to help us through the strategic planning process. There's work that's happening right now also with leaders throughout the district. Because I think, and I've said that when I first got here, that the strategic plan is a vital part of us moving forward. There's vital components in there that shows us the direction, like our north star, so that is actually happening right now. As far as, as funds is concerned. That is the difficult part. How do we get there once we have the plan in place? I think I would probably go back to the board for, for that as well. So part of that is Doctor McIntyre laying out a plan. Fiscal solvency plan, and then what is our obligation as a governance team, you know, following through on that plan? I think apart from that. What resources are we as a governance team going to solicit as well? I know the work of the superintendent is putting myself in front of individuals. And soliciting resources and telling our story. I think that's all of our responsibility as a governance team. I think it's our responsibility also to have a legislative platform. As well, and to get in front of people at the state. So. I, I'll share with you honestly that if we're just relying on resources that we have here within the district. It'd take us a long time to accomplish the plan, so we're gonna have to think differently. And get resources to actually actualize the plan. Thank you. Last question. Trying to figure out how to ask three questions and what. Is it possible? That's not the question. What are the pros and the cons of the board voting on the staffing cuts all at once? And to put that in context, normally you would vote for cuts for the next year, then you wait to the next year and vote for the next year. Assuming that there's no law that requires you to do it that way. What are the pros and cons of the board biting it all off at one time versus dribbling it out over the next however many years? That question is for you and for Miss Cleveland and for Dr. Hurst.
Okay. Great question. So I, I certainly, one of the things that I would, I would see as beneficial, knowing that there's a dollar value and staffing cuts that needs to be achieved is for the board to very quickly come around the kind of who we are, what we are conversation as far as service, you know, student achievement direction. So that way you can find a way to align the adjustment within the dollar amount planned, where it's not really such a loss. You're, you're just, you're, you're aligning to meet your plan. And it, this is part of that too. So if it's just this looming cut out there, then it's horrific because that's all people are gonna talk about, think about. Why would I apply for a job? What, what is the environment, the culture gonna feel like? It's not great. And, and certainly it's not the way I would want to do it. I was trying not to provide you a, a budget that looked like slide thirteen. I was trying to give you a pathway forward. And, and, and I understand that has consequences kind of around, especially around culture. And it might, that was not my intention to drive that side of the conversation. So I think really recognizing that, that we have to change the conversation from what we're not and can't into what we can master and excel. So what can we provide? Right? And, and so I, I would really challenge us as a team to try to refocus the way we're approaching this to what, what value we're bringing our students rather than fifteen point one million dollars in staffing next year, seven, eight point three million the following year. Because when you look at the scope of our numbers, you know, eight million dollars in staffing is like one program. I mean, it's one staff member at each school site. And, and every staff member is important. But if we're narrowing our focus and we're being exceptional and offering real value in what remains, then we have something, we have a story to tell that benefits students rather than cut, cut, cut. I didn't answer all your question. I'll, I'll leave for, for Dr. Hurst and Miss Cleveland.
Well, if you have more, I would love to hear your full answer, just like I would like to hear Miss Cleveland's full answer. And I'd like to hear Dr. Hurst's full answer.
I will say, just adding to what Dr. McIntyre said, cutting too fast, too soon, I think is going to, would have detrimental effects to accomplishing what we want to accomplish in the vision and strategic planning. And just to step up back a little bit, if we look at just the process that we're going through right now with the contract committee and cuts that have been made already. I've already shared that we really won't feel the effects of that until next year. But really, we're feeling some of that right now. And, and even right now, we're getting some emails about things that are being cut. And we're not even cutting everything at once. So it will make it harder for us to accomplish what we want to accomplish. But back to your question, trying to do too much, too fast, too soon, would make it extremely hard for us to do anything productive for our students. And it's almost something that I heard Dr. McIntyre said that we become like a jobs type community. We just come into work. There's just a job. We're just coming to work. There's no future. There's no vision. We're just coming and just doing work. We're just doing tasks. So that's my thoughts on cutting too fast, too soon, sir.
My thoughts. Are you done? Okay.
And I'm not asking another question. I heard what I think were your cons. But the question was, what are the pros and cons? And Dr. McIntyre as well, like the question was your pros and cons, right? We're trying to weigh, so you could do the pro side and you too, you too, and it's your turn. I'd appreciate it. I'm, I'm trying to think of the pros.
You want me to start with a pro?
Yes.
I think from a money standpoint, if you just show me the money, cutting all at once will definitely improve the budget much faster. But as I think Dr. Hurst and Dr. McIntyre has mentioned, you need to be very strategic when you make budget reductions. And I assume that fiscal solvency plan is a strategic document as well as a document just to get to a certain number. And so if it's strategic, then you're looking at making cuts that do not impact the welfare and education of the students to the, the best that you can. And so you're doing it methodically. You're doing it over time. And so I would think that's really important to this board, not to put the district in total chaos. Cuts are never great. But just total chaos would happen if you did it all at once. And it would really impact the programs and services that's being provided. And then we talked about attendance and enrollment and things that may be happening. So it does give you a little time to take a, a, another snapshot at what attendance looks like a year from now before you make severely drastic cuts all at once. So it does give you a little time to take a look at what's going on with the economy, what's going on with student attendance. And you may, you know, most likely, you know, the cost of living adjustment won't go up based on the state budget that you heard Dr. McIntyre present. But you know, the attendance issue, you never know where, you know, we're just making their budget assumptions, their attendance assumptions. So I would think that, that the fiscal solvency plan is a thoughtful document already in that it, it's doing it over time and it's doing as much as could be done possible for each of those years. But the pro would be, hey, you made the cut, an ongoing cut now would really significantly improve the district's finances.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for the questions, Jesse Phillips. So I'm gonna make my questions really fast because we actually don't have very much time. So, Ms. Cleveland, I'm sorry you just sat down because my questions are for you. I apologize. I'm gonna ask you two questions and then I think that's all I have time for. So if next year, we get to the point where we've done the work with the contract committee, we've done the work that, you know, the additional work staff's doing to find reductions elsewhere. And let's say that we were to fail to pass the solvency plan, right, this time next year or even earlier, right? What would happen from the county's perspective in that moment? Could you just walk us very quickly with what would be the next steps? If we were not successful in having a qualified budget next year?
Well, they would definitely continue with the fiscal advisor. I'm always trying to work myself out of a job. But the county would continue with the fiscal advisor, would stay and rescind any actions that is inconsistent with the district's ability to meet its obligations. Also, there could definitely be a state takeover. If you're going insolvent, there definitely could be a state takeover, you know, at some point, like in the next couple of years or three years out. And I would say that I've been a part of several state takeover teams and I would recommend that the district not look forward to a state takeover. You're talking about cuts as a, as a part of those teams you go in and your focus is not on usually education or welfare, students, the state administration's focus is on balancing the budget, which means the state would do whatever it takes. And I've been a part of this to balance the budget as quickly as possible. So I, I would say that that's where the district would be headed if, if it doesn't meet this fiscal solvency plan and doesn't get the district budget in balance.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. I was wondering if you could, don't sit down, if you could expand on that just very quickly. What are some of the things that in a takeover, the teams do? Like we saw in Oakland, right, like closure of schools, right? What would be some of the things that a team would come and do right away if we were to fail to have that plan passed?
Definitely make the cuts that need to be made, right-size the district, which may include school closure. Simple things, that small things, we cut cell phones. We've cut and, and put a freeze on all hiring. I've seen outsourcing of jobs. Gosh, kind of like, we kind of come in and we, we, you know, we take a look and we have to get the district's budget in balance. So it's not as thoughtful as this team would be. People who are in the district knows, but the program, the, you know, what programs are working, which ones are not working. It's more of a quick, kind of a quick step in and make the cuts that need to be made. The, you know, the board is only advisory in that situation. So the state administration can go in and, and just get it done. It's, I, even though I've been on those teams, I wouldn't say it's a positive experience either way, even being on the other side of it. The board doesn't get to vote on anything. It's just not, you know, you're, you're elected to represent the district, represent the students. And so I would hate to see that happen. I will say that.
Thank you so much, Miss Cleveland. Appreciate it. Board, we have fifteen minutes, so I'm actually gonna reduce our time for comments to two minutes each. Actually, a minute and a half, because we have the contracts that were pulled. So if we could put up the timer. Oh, I'm sorry. There was a question Clerk Smith Folds asked that was not answered. Could we very quickly answer that one, please?
Sure, I can share a broad brush. So our attendance rates are highest in grades four through eight. And in grades ten and eleven, they are lowest in TK and K and the ninth grade in secondary.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back to that. Thank you so much for that answer.
Thank you. Okay, everybody, I think the clock is up. Who would like to start? Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. I wanna thank you for the presentation, all presenters. And I also wanna encourage a better reward system for the budget team sitting in the back of a room on a cold chair, cold steel chair late at night is not a way to reward you. So thank you for your work and I'm hoping you take tomorrow off and Dr. McIntyre buys you lunch. There are a few levers that can be controlled. Okay, that's why I asked about assumptions. The assumptions need to be dead on. It's hard to do, but they have to be perfect. And then we can control to a certain degree attendance and enrollment and cost containment. And I do not think that this, this budget is aggressive enough. And I think that there should be deeper reductions considered before this comes back. I also think that FICMAT should come in and do a presentation on what it's like to have takeover. They can zoom in and they could do a little study session. I think it would be very informative for people to learn about that. And then I just wanna come back and do some housekeeping about dates. And, you know, there was obviously conflict with graduations and board meetings, so I'd like to see that not happen again. And I'd also like to see that change in board meetings around budgeting doesn't go in consent. I read everything, but I actually missed this and it's actually not okay to have just a week between the hearing and the adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, do you have comments?
Can I have my six seconds? Thank you. So it seems to me after listening to some of the answers that we received, that by time and the district. But throughout the years, we have bought time. This is not new. We're buying more time. I do hope that that time is productively used. I would like to say that this district, though, really is under attack in many different ways. We talk about charter schools and the impact that they have on our budget. But last week, I saw an ad at the Elswood Art Station. And it was for upgrading unified school district. They are literally advertising in this district for students to transfer out to go to them. So it's not just charter schools. Public schools that are next to us are doing the same thing. And so I don't have a lot of time to speak this evening on this issue in particular, but we, we have to get our stuff together. And the mess that we're in, we created it. And we have to get out of it because if we don't, we're going to die.
Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for everyone being here to answer those questions. I, I think we have to continue to do the work. I think that we are doing the work in several of our different committees. I think that deep dive conversations need to continue to happen at the the top levels of district leadership as well as board leadership. I think that President Gonzalez-Hoyt, tonight, you have seen me trying to keep us aligned with our policies and procedures that we've all agreed upon. And in that same vein, I'm gonna continue with the last little bit of my time. We have agreed in our retreats that we're not gonna do cross-talking. That we're gonna stay focused and we're not gonna talk to each other when we are giving a presentation or we're asking questions or we're listening to each other. So we need to keep that policy that we bought, the majority of the board agreed upon in a retreat. And we don't need to talk to one another because it is distracting, because I can hear all the way over here the cross-talk. And it's also, I believe, something that we need to look at as the, the public has a right to hear everything that we're saying when we're sitting on this dais. So we need to speak into the microphone and we do not need to cross-talk with one another. Thank you so much for the hard work, staff. I look forward to us continuing to do the work so we can keep the cuts away from our children, which is something that the majority of the board is in agreement upon. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Okay, for my comments, I did wanna point out, you know, slide twenty-eight on the fiscal solvency plan. Like I wanna say that I'm voting on it next week. I'm already announcing it because I want people to know that I do have it as a priority that we move in the right direction. But I will, I do want to acknowledge that I go to every school and every school tells me they don't have enough. Right? And sorry, I keep looking at Dr. McIntyre, but I'm not really talking to. And the thing is that this solvency plan cuts two hundred and thirty people. Right? And we're not talking about added staff that we have somewhere just not working, right? I mean, we're talking about teachers, administrators, right? So when we talk about the impact, right? If anyone here says like, let's do it faster, you don't understand what's happening in our schools. I'm sorry to say it. Right? And, and I think that cutting one person, we heard tonight, helping on middle school, right? They're really upset of the impact of cutting half an FTE to that school, right? Imagine how it's gonna be to cut two hundred and fifty people, right? I'm saying we have to do it because we have to have a balanced budget, right? Because of what we heard from Dr. Cleveland tonight. We have to keep the state out of our business, right? Because they're gonna come in and close our schools. That's what they're gonna do. Right? Because we have some smaller schools and that's our choice because that's a priority that we have. But we have to be thoughtful and our community is calling in upset about what we're cutting. The reality is we have no money anywhere, right? So we're gonna have to make some tough choices and everybody needs to be involved. Okay, thank you so much, everyone. We have one last item. We have five minutes. Trustee Phillips, I think you pulled C five, which is our contracts. Dr. McIntyre, I think trustee Phillips wanted to get a very quick presentation. I know you're not gonna be able to do a presentation in three minutes, but if you could just talk about the contracts, the amount very quickly and then we'll I'll move for a vote.
Is there a specific contracting question?
So there was not a specific contract in question. The reason that I was because of the many issues that we have and it's collectively three point eight million dollars. And I just thought someone should speak to that instead of just being on the consent calendar.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Most of what you see on the on the contracts tonight is is primarily focused on our summer operation. So you're seeing a lot of expenditures of L cap Title One, especially the the biggest part of the pie by a lot, almost two thirds, is expanded opportunities. So the before and after school, specifically the after school program. So we have that nine hour day of support even in the summer program. We are seeing some central and site based Title One expenditures, which are often used as part of our summer program. ACES is also piggybacked with the expanded learning. So two point eight million of that three point eight million is all after school directed. The rest is primarily being directed during the summer school program, whether it be academic enrichment or makeup.
Thank you. I'm gonna move the entire section
Thank you, trustee Phillips. I'll second that. Board, any questions or comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, not for that. Not for not for consent items. Oh, is there any public comment on this item? Thank you.
There is no public comment.
Okay, great. Okay, board, let's vote. We'll start with trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Thank you, trustee Barone.
Barone, yes.
And Clerk Smith Folds.
I stepped away, so I abstain. I'm sorry, I had to go to restroom.
Oh, we're voting on C five, the contracts.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. And I'm a yes, pass unanimously. Thank you so much. Our next Board of Education meeting, we have a retreat on Tuesday, the thirteenth. And then we have a regular board meeting the following day, Wednesday, the fourteenth. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good night. I adjourn our meeting at eleven twenty seven.